Another warm day in Monterey, I hope. We're going to want to welcome everyone who is watching this on various media to our city council meeting of July 7. And we're very happy to welcome you. And I know I speak for myself and maybe others, I really miss seeing everybody in person. And we hope to have that day sooner than later, but with the latest COVID news and the partial shutdown of the county again by the governor for three weeks. We just all have to be sure we're doing the right thing so we can get together sooner than later. And I'm Clyde Roberson, an honor to be your mayor of the city that we all love and take care of together. And your hearing city council is Dan Albert, Alan Hoffa, Ed Smith, and Tyler Williamson. And you're going to be able to meet some of our really capable staff as we go along. First thing I want to do is to have our cogent assistant, I'm on the Cs by the way, our cogent assistant city manager, Nat Rochanasa Thera, to just explain for those who might find this a new format, how these meetings are conducted according to the Governor Newsom's orders and how you can participate. So Nat, the floor is yours, please.
Yes, thank you Mayor Roberson. We do encourage members of the public to watch this broadcast on YouTube Live, which does have a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. Members of the public can watch on youtube.com backslash City of Monterey. We're also on the YouTube app on Google Play or the Apple App Store. To make a public comment when viewers are watching live on either YouTube or Channel 25, you can see there's a Chyron, also known as a lower third caption that is on the bottom of the screen. At that time, you can call that conference line, dial area code 831-225-0330. And when prompted, enter the code 192-7648-POUND. Once you've entered the system, dial star five to virtually raise your hand and you'll be added into the queue to speak. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it's their turn to speak. We do ask that callers, please, turn off any television or computers speakers or go to another room when you're connected by phone, because any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each caller in the order of their hands raised and call out the last four digits of their caller's phone number before I unmute them. I may also be calling individuals based on their name that's listed on caller ID. So those are the, that's the process we'll be following this afternoon and this evening for our council meeting.
Good, and thank you very much Nat. So.
I think we may have lost the mayor, or is it just my internet connection? I also don't hear him.
It's your internet connection Nat.
So should we, let's wait for a few minutes for him to come back. And if he's not in a couple minutes, back in a couple minutes, then let's go ahead, okay?
Yep. That, that sounds great. And since our first item is, well, we'll do presentations before we open public comment, but we will wait for him.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. What happened was the, my battery went dead. No, wait a minute, the battery on my computer went dead.
We're done with the consent, Mr. Mayor.
And every, and everyone said amen. But I hope we didn't skip the presentations. Because that's the first thing and very special. Hans, did you want to share that or at least introduce it? And I'd be happy to.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to recognize our city clerk Clementine Bonner Klein. Clementine has achieved a high professional accomplishment and has been recognized by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks as a Master Municipal Clerk, MMC. So that is a very high designation that you can only achieve after you have done quite an extensive recurrent education. And I remember very well, many years ago, that Clementine was hosting actually workshops also here over the weekends with other municipal clerks where they met in the Rob Nelson Room and trained each other in respective questions. And I am very, very proud to present to you that our meetings are now being shepherded by a master municipal clerk. He is recognized by her peers, which are around 14,000 members throughout the states and Canada and 15 other countries. So this is a pretty big thing. It's internationally recognized and we, we see with the changes that are coming from the state office, from the governor's office during COVID-19, that we are still appearing to Brown Act requirements. And through all those things, folks, especially experts like Clementine are tremendously important for the transparency of our operation as well as for the record keeping that we have to do in responding to constituents that are sharing with us their opinions about council agendas, our staff report, et cetera. So it's a great honor Clementine to have you on our staff. And my, our heartfelt congratulations from, from all of us for that accomplishment Clementine.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, I'm blushing, thanks.
You know, it's, it's, we were talking before the meeting started, I was reminiscing a little bit about whether when I was the mayor the first time in the mid 80s, and that was pre-internet. And so we'll have to ask Clementine if it's easier with, with the internet and electronic records or not. But Friday in the city's clerk's office was publication evening for the following meeting. And it was piles of paper and flying around, trying to get those out on time, trying to get them out to people who wanted them. Those were before the days where you could just look up on your computer. And Clementine, thank you for keeping a list of people who get our agendas for all of our boards and commissions. And so it's just so grateful that you're a board, we've digitized most of our records. So in many ways, it's, we get quicker information, but how you can keep track of everything, you're just well-known and well-appreciated without, throughout the city.
Thank you Mayor.
Right, and we're just very pleased that you are our official city clerk, that's exciting. So with that, we'll go to public comments. And if, again Nat, if you want to remind everyone or put the, that phrase, I don't know what you call it, you have a a croissant with butter on it, what is that term that you use? The siren, is that it?
The Chyron?
Chyron, it was not a croissant.
On the bottom, yes, the lower third. It may have a French origin.
Yeah, really.
We do, we don't have any public comment on the presentation we just heard, but we are going to open up public comment and also at the same time, any items to, any requests to pull consent items will also be taken now. And we, we did receive a request from a member of the public to pull item number 10. So that, that did arrive in the city clerk's office today. We again encourage members of the public to watch on YouTube Live and to comment for public comment or requesting that items be pulled on the consent calendar, please dial area code 831-225-0330. And when prompted, enter the code 192-7648-POUND. And then once you've entered the system, dial star five to raise your hand and you'll be added into the queue to speak. So let's do.
Before we open up here, these public comments would be non-agenda items. We did get the request to pull item 10 from the consent. So if folks, you have up to three minutes to share with us anything that's not on the agenda. That's within the municipal code and jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. And if you'd like a response from our, our very celebrated staff, if you leave a contact either right now or you can do that by email, we will get back to you because a lot of times people are interested in more information. But because of the Brown Act and state law, we aren't able to discuss public comments that are not on the agenda. But with that Nat, let's go.
And then, yep, and then to clarify too, item number 10, which is the only item that has been pulled so far, that will be heard separately. So right now, again, public comments and requests to pull consent items, item number 10 will be heard separately. Because there, once an item's pulled, typically we deliver a staff report and then open up public comments separately on that. So if you are calling for item number 10, please hang up and call again. So let's see if we have any members of the public who are calling on any items. And let's see if the Chyron's up, items on the, yep, Chyron's up. And we actually don't have any members of the public who have called in for items not on the agenda.
Okay.
Or request to pull, so.
All right, in that case, we'll, if we do, as has been our practice, because this is a tiny bit awkward, if we do hear folks who do phone in later, or we can encourage you to phone in this evening for general public comments, we'll certainly try to accommodate you. So at that point, we will go ahead to the consent item, we are going to pull item 10. Do any of the council members want to make a remark or pull any of the other items?
Yes Mayor, I'd just like to make a remark on number nine. You don't have to pull it, just wanted to make a remark.
Okay. Now Dan, Dan Albert, our good friend, go ahead, why don't you do that on item nine right now, please?
Okay, well, I thank the staff for giving us a good idea of what, what this item's about. And obviously, it appears that JPA has run its political course and no longer is supported by the cities who formed it. With that said, I'd like to thank the past mayors for their bold leadership with the honest attempt to develop a new water source for the good of all who live on the peninsula. In my opinion, it's still in the best interest of all the peninsula cities that we continue to use a collective voice in the pursuit of a new sustainable water source. So I do support the dissolution of the, of the JPA, but I just wanted to make that comment and thank all the mayors that started this many years ago.
Thank you for that comment, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, may I also make a comment?
Please, Councilmember Ed Smith.
Yeah, so given the, the financial hardships that all of the cities are in, I have to concur that it's probably time to dissolve the JPA for the reasons of cost alone. However, fundamentally, I concur with the same comments Dan Albert said. Thank those who formed it many years ago, the heavy lifting. Pardon me, but I'm getting a message, if I don't act here, I have to stop my computer for taking over, there we go. I want to say thank you for all those that did the heavy lifting to form the JPA, did a massive amount of examination studies and shepherded a close examination of sustainable projects. We know that we have big decisions coming, probably next month at the California Coastal Commission, so I'll be watching that as well. I still would like to see all of the cities represented by the mayors, when it's appropriate, to step up and talk and represent us, because we still have a desperate need to have resolution in our sustainable water supplies in years going forward. So this action tonight does not mean that we are not paying attention to the regional issue. And from time to time, I'm sure our cities will all on the peninsula be stepping up to voice our concerns or directions over our supplies and sustainable roadmap for future water sources. So with that, making a commitment to not ignore the future, pay attention to the future. But I can agree, to save the money, we probably should no longer participate in the JPA. But that does not mean we still don't have a voice.
Okay, good, thank you. That was kind of the sentiment expressed at the water, the mayor's, it's called the mayor's water authority, but the water authority meaning, in that the mayors will be pursuing either informal or formal avenues where we can or they can get together and come out with united voice on not only water, but any other items of interest. Because as we know, we're getting much more regional as we go along, so thank you for that. Anyone else on consent, any items on the consent other than item 10 then?
Yeah Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment on number four.
All right, well, Councilmember Tyler Williamson, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, so for the community members out there that don't have a space to flip through and look, the subject of this one is to amend a resolution of the master fee schedule to add fee for candidate statements. And I just want to highlight that this was something brought forward by the the innovative city clerk that we have, that was just recognized at the beginning of the council meeting. And so I think, I just want to highlight an example of how incredibly essential this employee is to our organization. So I just kind of wanted to continue that dialogue and give recognition for Clementine working to find solutions towards some of our financial problem. She's being creative, she's working within her lane to do that, and that's exactly the type of employees that we want to make sure that we're highlighting within the city to, for folks to know what our values are. So thank you again Clementine.
Good, thank you for that. I don't, am I, am I coming across as an image versus live?
What are you, you're, it's just your image, it's not your actual video.
Yeah, I'm trying to, okay, I'm hitting the turn on camera.
It's usually a signal problem, Clyde.
Okay.
It'll go back and forth as the signal is not able to give you a full video.
Okay, thank you.
You're larger than life figure.
Well, maybe I'm doing everybody a favor that you don't have to see me live, right?
At the very least, we get to see your photo Mayor.
Thank you, a very recent photo too. So, so I think we're ready to make a motion to approve the consent without item 10. Will entertain a motion, please?
I'll make the motion for consent to be approved minus item 10.
Second. All right, we have motion in a second. Our very cooperative city clerk will do roll call, please.
Certainly, Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great, huh, okay. Still can't get a live picture, oh well. Item 10, we had a request, Nat, as you said, someone wanted to pull that. So in that case, let's have a brief staff report, so everybody who's watching knows what we're talking about, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a quick agenda, a quick staff report that will be presented by our capable HR director, Alison Hock.
Very good.
Good evening Mayor and councilmembers, I'm going to present my screen as well. I don't know if my video is not working, I can't see it, so I'm about to present, let me know if this is.
Okay.
See this?
You are live, we'll see if you're, if what you present comes.
Oh good, oh good, okay, all right, here we go. Okay, everyone, are we good? Okay, great, so item 10 is to provide you with the concessions update. You know many of the concessions that were offered, we were communicated them to you in closed session and we have an update for you. So I'm just going to go through it and take any questions. As an overview, the city labor team met with every board of every labor group. We explained that concessions are needed to help restore positions and avoid future layoffs due to the COVID-19 pandemic, shelter in place order, and the resulting closures and revenue loss. We already had some prior concessions from our executive staff members. And we had originally asked for concessions prior to the layoffs, weren't able to successfully negotiate those with bargaining groups. So we went back to them in June after we decided that we really did need to communicate to them that we needed additional concessions to help the city. We communicated to all these bargaining groups that all concessions would be placed in a reopen and hire fund so that we could reopen city services. And so the update is that every labor group except GEM has stepped up to help in our recovery. So I'm going to give you a quick overview. These are the new concession savings, so there were some that were approved in the spring, I'll get to those. But these are the new concession savings. The top chart is the general fund impact, the bottom chart is the other funds impact, and then at the bottom is the total. MFCOA is our assistant fire chief and our division chiefs. PLMA is our assistant fire chief that is now vacant, and then our three, our lieutenants. MEA are all of our miscellaneous managers. MFFA are firefighters, fire engineers, fire captains. And MPA are our police officers and sergeants. Yes.
Would you mind hitting hide there?
Thank you, got it, is that better? No, there, got it?
I think it, oh, there, there we go, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So these are the concessions that were offered, everyone has agreed to defer their COLA for at least six months or a year to provide a reduction in salary, some of the units. So there's different concessions and different lengths of those concessions. And those are all detailed in the staff report, I can go through them individually if you'd like, but I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of the concessions offered in the savings. Again, these are all in the staff report. Just to give you an overview of our prior concessions, our city manager, city attorney, the MMEA, which is the department head bargaining team, and then our confidential executives, which is HR finance and our assistant city manager. These are our prior concessions. I will note that there is a typo in the staff report that said MMEA and confidential provided a 9% pay reduction. It's actually an 8%, so that's corrected here and I'll need to make that in the staff report. And, and just to give you an overview of our employee groups, our executive staff is 11 filled positions, so the impact of concessions is going to depend on how many people are in those positions, obviously. MEA has 46 filled positions, MFCOA is four, PLMA is right now three filled positions. Our firefighter union is 78 filled positions, and police are 42 filled positions. So all of those positions have offered concessions. Our largest group though is GEM, and that's 198 filled positions, and so we don't have concessions from the GEM unit. I did want to give council some information because I have heard a lot of information out there about what's going on with our discussions with our GEM bargaining groups. So I wanted to provide you with some specific information. So in early June, GEM did make an initial offer of a concession to delay a 2% salary increase for only three months. At that same time, we had offers for longer concessions, six months, a year, and more higher concessions, a bigger salary agreement to defer salary plus reduce salary. So I did have a direction from council, and this is just from the council report. It said that the council did not accept a concession, the concession offered from GEM and gave confidential direction to its negotiators. Then the following day, in an email, I communicated to the GEM board, and I've quoted myself here because I and there's a lot of discussion out there that the city rejected GEM's offer, and I just kind of think words matter and I want to make sure that everyone's aware. What my email said to the board, to Laura Prost specifically, she asked exactly what council's reason was. And I said, "My direction from council is to have a conversation with GEM regarding your concession that provides 40,000 one-time money to the general fund in light of concessions offered by other bargaining groups and concession offered by our neighboring city employee groups." So our intent was to go back to the GEM board and say, "You offered the three, three months of a deferral of a salary increase. We are having the largest revenue decline in history, can we have, can you, can you give us more that's more in line with what other bargaining groups are doing in our city so that we can restore city services and restore some position?" So it was intended to be a request to reconsider and offer a larger concession. So what we did is city staff, which our city manager joined myself and Gina Russo, our deputy HR manager, and we met with the GEM leadership team, the board, and asked them to consider a more significant concession. to consider a more significant concession. We communicated to the JEM board that we were open to additional concession ideas. Ryan Heron, who's the representative, noted to us that other cities were doing furloughs. We also acknowledged that, and we said, "If that's something JEM wanted to do, we were open to that." Our city manager, Hans Uslar, also explained to them that he wanted to acknowledge that JEM is, does have some positions that are our lower paid positions when compared to other units. So we wanted to acknowledge that, you know, if what we needed to do is maybe tier concessions, and maybe those making less than $75,000 a year gave less, and those making more, some employees in the JEM unit, you know, make in excess of $100,000 a year, some of them make more than employees in other bargaining groups, so maybe those that make the higher amounts would be able to offer a higher concession. We let them know we were open to that. They also said that they didn't want to offer a concession when there was no guarantee that their concessions wouldn't restore JEM jobs. So we communicated to them that we were open to a concession that was contingent upon that concession only restoring JEM jobs. We do know that the JEM group were, had the positions, most of the positions that were laid off, we acknowledge that, and we, we, we want to bring those people back, so we said we would accept concessions that only had that contingency that it had to restore their jobs. One more thing, we also just, you know, did talk about the fact that Pacific Grove has agreed to significant concessions. They have an agreement with their miscellaneous unit for up to 20% salary reduction for a furlough. For the first quarter of the fiscal year, they're just going to take a 10% and see how it goes. Seaside has an agreement for a 10% furlough, and they're deferring their salary increase all the way until February. And Santa Cruz is doing a 10% reduction in salary and benefits for furloughs. There's other concessions out there as well, so we just wanted to, you know, communicate to JEM that this is something that other miscellaneous groups are doing, because this pandemic is affecting all of our cities, and quite frankly, the city of Monterey, because of the TOT, we all know is getting hit more significantly than these other cities. So JEM's response, Ryan Heron is JEM representative, he communicated to us that 73% of JEM voted no concessions. We did ask him what they voted on, what the language was that they voted on, but he would not give that to us, he just confirmed that they voted no concessions. In our meeting with Laura Pratt, with the, with the JEM board, we did ask, "Does no concessions mean that you're withdrawing your original offer of 2% for three months?" And Laura Pratt said yes, and she said that was because council rejected that concession. And I did reiterate, we didn't reject the concession, we didn't accept the concession because we wanted to continue talking. But Laura Pratt has consistently reiterated that we rejected it, so I, I think they're holding on to that, unfortunately. It wasn't intended to be offensive, it was intended to continue a conversation. So JEM is our largest labor group, and right now they're the only labor group that just took a previously negotiated salary increase. On July 1st, they had a salary increase of 2%. So right now, our recommendation, I think we're, we don't have any further discussions planned with the JEM bargaining group, they just, we'll, you know, if they reach out to us, we will certainly let you know. But right now, our recommendation is to accept the concessions and extend contracts for the other unit. I do want to highlight that we are so thankful, we feel a lot of gratitude and appreciation to the other groups. We had some, you know, they really stepped up, I think in Hans's discussion to all employees last week, he kind of went through each labor group to thank them, and we highlighted how willing they were. I will say that our police and fire management groups offered concessions before we even asked, and they came forward a while ago and said that they really wanted to make concessions. MEA, after our first meetings, stepped up and offered a significant concession. Our police and fire units as well, it's really, you know, it's a difficult thing to ask your members right when you've signed a contract to then take those salary, negotiated salary increases away, but they all stepped up to give concessions, and, you know, these other units, and I will say specifically police and fire, they knew that the, their concessions were going to impact the employees outside their unit, for the most part, because the JEM unit and the MEA unit and MMEA are the units that actually had the layoffs. So they were really still willing to participate and wanted to say they wanted to help the city, so we wanted to thank them for that. I know council will appreciate that as well. And so I also wanted to let you know that they've agreed to no new increases for the term of their agreement. We're going to delay and defer some of the previously negotiated increases. It won't, we won't have any increases until 2021, and then we are going to extend the contracts, and that's our recommendation, to expire 30th, 2022. So we will now be able to budget for.
I'm not hearing my signal.
So I just wanted to also remind everyone that the concessions savings, there was a direction that will go directly into a fund to reopen and hire. So that is the purpose of the concessions, it's to help restore services and help bring back employees and staff up our city services. So with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Allison, any questions from the council? Councilmember Ed Smith, you'll have to unmute, please.
Yep, I see that, thank you. So just late today, looking at some of the letters that came in, are we going to give an opportunity to be read into the record? And were they indicating that they wanted to speak to the item via the letters? I guess it's a question for Allison or city manager?
Sure. I did see two letters that came in for public comments, but I, I don't know if they wanted those read into the record. Councilmember Smith, I see both of those letter writers called in right now, I believe they may be planning to get a public comment.
Okay, great, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that late today, we did see those, and so I look forward to hearing those members that are employees of JEM.
Good, thank you, Ed, because what we had been doing was actually reading the emails into the record early on under the executive order, and we found out that that was taking hours, and we were able to change that protocol. Again, offering people the opportunity to phone in and reiterating that any emails that we get, we absolutely positively read. I can assure everyone watching that your council and your staff does value that input and reads everything, but I'm happy to hear Clementine telling us that we do have some folks in the queue who want to speak to us. So that was a great point. So shall we go ahead and let's hear a public comment, please? So Nat, I think we're going to turn it over to you or Clementine.
Absolutely, we do have a few callers, and the first, Mr. Mayor, three-minute timer, is that, or two-minute, what would you prefer? I think, we'll, we'll go with three minutes, I think that, that's the time limit that Mayor Clyde mentioned earlier, and we'll start with, our first caller is, first caller is Nate Coda. Hi, Nate.
Yes, hi, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Nate Coda, and I am a miscellaneous employee with the city of Monterey. I was shocked and saddened to hear that along with my fellow employees will be receiving our scheduled 2% COLA. With 13 employees in my division being let go, my wife being one of those, I don't know how to look them in the eye and explain to them why I'm receiving a raise during these unprecedented times. I request the city and the union to get back together and look at a way that we could potentially help our former coworkers during this global crisis. Lastly, I plan to contribute my 2% COLA to the pandemic employee assistance program, PEEP for short, or to the city rehire fund. I also encourage other JEM members to do the same. I would, however, like some guidance on the city on the best process for contributing this money to either one of those two funds. Again, thank you for listening, and have a great night.
All right, thank you. Our next caller is Rachel Dice. Rachel, you're live with the city of Monterey, council.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Rachel Dice, and I am the recreation coordinator at Casanova Park Center, and, sorry, I get a little, getting a little emotional here. I've been with the city for the last 25 years, and I'm also a dues-paying member of JEM. And although I respect the voting process, I don't always agree with the outcome. And with that being said, I can't in good consciousness take an increase. So, like Nate, I would like to give mine to either PEEP or the reopen and rehire fund. And again, we would like to, you know, a little bit of guidance as to how to go about doing that. Thank you guys for your time, I really appreciate this.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Laura Pratt. Hi, Laura, you are live with the Monterey City Council.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
We can, we can hear you, yes. Yes, we can hear you.
I'd like to straighten out a few things in the agenda report. First of all, we were told multiple times that the city council rejected our initial proposed concession, which was to defer our 2% raise that took effect July 1st for three months, and then revisit how the economy is boom in three months to see if we needed to give more. It was not just 2% for three months of this, it was 2% for three months and then look at where we are at with our COVID-19 economic recovery. The other thing I wanted to make sure people understand is that the 2% that the other groups are giving up, most of them have that 2% for over a year longer than we did, or almost a year longer than we did. For instance, the executives and the management and all of them, they had that 2% last year, and they only, the city only declared a fiscal emergency after the executives and the managers took their 2% rate. The next thing is that I see that fire, I believe, is contributing an extra percentage to their purse retirement fund. I want to make sure that the public understands that JEM has actually been giving an extra 3% towards our purse retirement for about 10 years now. We've been paying an extra 3% of the city's obligation for our retirement for 10 years since the last recession. So a lot of these things that were said in this agenda report and the way it's being presented to you, the council, and to the public in general, I want to make sure that the citizens of Monterey, of which I'm one, understand that the lowest paid workers in the city already gave an awful lot by not getting a raise for over a year, and also by having 40 positions cut and another considerable amount, I think, another 60 positions or so frozen, when already we're woefully understaffed. I let you guys know about two years ago that when we were passing a budget, "Please not do it on JEM's back anymore."
Laura, I'm sorry, you're.
Long before COVID came along. So again, I'm urging you not to do it on our back, we've already paid the highest.
Thank you, thank you, Laura, and our next caller is Shannon Leon. Hi, Shannon.
Hi, this is Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Shannon Leon. I've worked in the recreation division for the past 20 years, and I feel I need to give a different perspective. This is unprecedented times, this is COVID, this is nothing that anyone could have planned for. I'm also a dues-paying JEM member and have been, most likely since I became a full-time employee. In all these years, I've all, I have not always agreed with JEM, but I respect its decision and the direction provided. Unfortunately, I'm calling you today because I can no longer remain silent about things that matter. Even though I'm grateful you still have my job, which I love, I'm devastated by the loss of over 13 coworkers in the recreation division and even more at the sports center and library. I want to express to the council that we've been irresponsible and short-sighted to be taking a 2% COLA at this time while others have lost their jobs, and I'm not the only one who feels this way. As someone who works in a division that took one of the largest reductions, I feel comfortable in stating that my former coworkers, who no longer have a voice in union negotiations, would also be against taking a 2% increase. I also truly believe that the city would not have made these drastic reductions if it were not for COVID-19. This is not just a local crisis, but also a national and global crisis, and I can't imagine any industry right now receiving pay increases. This is the time to be thinking about the greater good and work to support the city families and do what is necessary for further layoffs and to bring back laid-off employees who need their jobs and health insurance. I will also be contributing my 2% plus at least the equivalent of my annual union dues to either the city reopen and hiring fund or the PEEP program. I encourage the city to find a way for voluntary tail or world deductions to the reopen and hire fund or to accept employee donations directly to its fund. I know there are many JEM and non-JEM employees that would be willing to give to support bringing back laid-off employees. I want to thank my fellow coworkers and other bargaining groups that have made concessions to the benefit of the reopen and rehire fund, and I thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Shannon, and we have no other public comment at this time. So we can turn it back to Mayor Roberson.
There I am. We, we very much appreciate the, the public comment, and I very much appreciate the labor groups who have made concessions and sacrifices for the sake of their fellow employees. That is really the, the highest calling, and so appreciative and admirable for them to want to keep their fellow employees getting paid and honor and safety staff, and, and just a heartfelt, from my heart, being an elementary school teacher for many years, having gone through this same process myself, it's so important to keep our colleagues employed and do what we can, so we thank those groups that have done that for us. Council, comments, motion, how, the floor is open, please?
Mayor, I just had a question for staff.
Yes, please, Councilmember Tyler.
Is it possible for those JEM employees that have identified or, or future JEM employees that may identify interest in wanting to give up their 2%, that communication can go out to all of them, there's clear instruction on what they can do to contribute those funds?
Yes, this is possible, Councilmember Williamson. I do not know right now the path forward, how to do that, but that is something that our finance director, together with our human resources director, can figure out how we do that.
Okay, and, and then, and I'll just kind of add a comment here, and it's a little bit awkward for me, because I, I am trying to be careful of creating that separation for allowing things that are discussed in negotiations to happen with the negotiators. And so what I'm hearing partially is, is that there was an element, and perhaps I forgot this, so maybe this was part of the discussion, but I don't recall hearing something about the three-month offer being made with the expectation that we come back at that time. So that last element, I don't recall hearing that from the updates that we received as a council, but what I would say is that we are going through unprecedented times, and I think some of the callers that, that dialed in, for us to kind of go back and forth and rechecking, I mean, we might need to do that with everybody else in six months, because we don't really know what's going to be happening with, with COVID-19, but I think we just need to move forward with this as it is, and hopefully there's space to continue the dialogue with the, with the JEM unit, because I think we all have to recognize that we're in this together, so I, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the, the staff report.
I'll second that. I do have a few comments, Mr. Mayor, when it's appropriate. Yes, please, and you do have the floor, Councilmember Allen.
Um, so to our, our labor groups.
Um, so to our labor groups who have offered concessions, we sincerely thank you. It's not easy to do that and times are tough and we appreciate that. Um, we appreciate you making a difference for your colleagues and for the city. To the public, please understand that these are concessions that the labor groups have offered. It's not something the city can coerce or demand. All we can do is explain the severity of the situation, offer different ways that the employee groups can try to help us save money, but ultimately it's up to them because they're under contract that we agreed to when the economy was very different. Um, so that's why we appreciate so much their willingness to help out. To our GEM employees, we value you. We want to bring people back. And I would just encourage you to reach out to the city staff. And sometimes things get said and it can be hard, but I know that you want what's best for your colleagues and for the city too. With respect to the, uh, to COVID, I mean, we've already seen this week, we're moving backwards and that's going to affect the city's revenues. And it could happen again. We don't, we don't know. It's an unprecedented novel virus. And I've been in public service my whole life. I've never seen an agency hit this hard. And, uh, so we really do need to continue to work together. And, uh, we want to bring the city back in every way and with everyone, but, uh, it's just going to take some time and some cooperation. So those would be my comments. And I don't know if, Mr. Mayor, if it would make sense for us to give any additional direction to the motion as far as, uh, staff trying to work and create alternatives for other staff who would like to make contributions. We heard in the, from the callers, a couple of different suggestions. I don't know what's best, but I think we want to indicate some direction to staff to work on that.
Yes, I would think, uh, your statement is heard loud and clear by our very competent city manager. And they will get the mechanism in place to do exactly that, to take people up on their very generous offers. Other comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah, I just, I want to add to the conversation of appreciation to those groups that worked so hard through the negotiations and months passed and got to a point where they signed contracts. And then, uh, we have the outbreak of COVID-19 and, and as they say, all the rules changed. And they negotiated representing on behalf of their respective labor groups. And, uh, with the exception of being able to come to an agreement with GEM, all the other groups sacrificed quite a bit to help out collectively with the city to help solve this problem, bridge the gap in budgetary differences so that we can get us to essential services throughout the city moving forward. And the budget process we just went through was not easy. A lot of sacrifices on the community's part as labor groups go. Um, and all of the city council members, we all worked hard to get that budget through. We know that dealing with the COVID and the responses that we have to make are, if not month-to-month, but week-to-week and now day-to-day as the conditions change. So, we know that we'll have many dialoguing conversations and opportunities moving forward. Um, much appreciated those that called in from GEM. Um, and I want to recognize them specifically and say that you, you individuals that called in saying that you want to sacrifice your salary on behalf of the city, you were brave individuals to be able to stand up and to do that. And I want to acknowledge those individuals as being very courageous and brave to be able to muster that, um, that value and virtue to say it's important for you to help out. So we greatly appreciate that. As far as where we go from here, um, I think it's appropriate that maybe we ask an addendum to the motion that, uh, human resources and the city manager work with those that want to donate their portion. And the door is always open for, uh, the GEM representatives to open back up negotiations if they believe they can make some substantial accommodations going forward. So if there's a way to amend the motion, I would be comfortable doing that.
All right, Tyler, you made the motion. Are you comfortable with that clarification or addendum?
I do accept that.
And Allen, you second it? Good?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to say a few words.
Yes, please, Councilmember.
Thank you. I think our council has expressed the appreciation to all our, at least our labor groups that have made concessions. I think it's really difficult when you negotiate salary increases, then you have to turn around and give part of it back. And that's always very difficult on everyone. But I was very touched by the callers that called in and wanted to, as Ed mentioned, wanted to give part of their salaries back. It's, it kind of gives you a warm feeling that you have a family in your city and they're all trying to work together. So I'm hoping, uh, that this, this crisis that we're in now will, will be much better in the future. I hope so, and that we could all still continue to work together. So, uh, I appreciate all of the concessions that were made at the, from all the labor groups and, uh, and let's hope things get better. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. All very well said and heartfelt. Uh, Clementine, will you do roll call on the motion in a second, please?
Roll call, did you want me to read the motion or just the roll call?
No, we, we, we got it.
Okay, um, Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes.
Well, we have three public hearings and I think we probably will be able to go through those fairly quickly. The first one is rezoning 603 to 605 Hoffman Avenue to create a historic resource and to apply a Mills Act contract. Unless the council feels the need for a presentation, I think we could just go straight to a public comment if there is any on that. Nat, do we have anyone who wanted to share some thoughts on that item number 13?
You know, we have not put up the chyron yet, so we may want to-
All right, let's just take a moment.
And, uh, again, just a reminder of how to call in and on this item, item number, this, this item here, uh, number 13, Mills Act. We ask folks to call into 831-225-0330 and enter the code 1927648 pound. Once you've entered the system, dial star five to raise your hand to speak. Let's see. No one has called in yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I offer a filler here while we wait for just a moment in case somebody does want to call?
Well, I don't know. It all depends.
Short one on item three, which is a request for the first reading of Mills Act for, uh, 603 to 605 Hoffman Avenue. I want to note in here that the, uh, this went through the normal process and the owner of the property is committing to do a variety of things to bring the property back under a substantial recognition of historical value. So I much appreciate the fact that they're willing to spend a lot of money to restore this property and, uh, remove all the things that are non-compliant. So this, this action tonight ensures that they will be doing that and they are committed to do that through this action tonight. So this process is not an easy one and they're committed to bring this property back to its historical value. So much appreciated.
Yes. And I want to ensure people are not taking this lightly. It's, uh, but it has gone through the Historical Preservation Commission, I believe, and also the Planning Commission. And by law since, uh, I think it's a rezon that it does ultimately come to the city council. So Nat, any, uh, any comment at this point?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to rezone the property and to authorize a Mills Act contract.
Second.
All right, uh, if there's no discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. And again, congratulations to the owners who are taking such good care of their property. The next item is we'll allow home occupations without a permit process. And we, again, I think a real brief overview of this. Did we have this presentation at our last meeting? It seems like we did and maybe we didn't get to it. Can you, uh, or did, maybe I just read it. I don't remember. It seems like we've had this presentation before. I see. Our very commendable planning director, community development director, Kim Cole, and she, I think, can help me with that.
Um, thank you, Mayor. It, uh, the item was on a previous agenda, but the council did not receive a presentation because of, um, the amount of time that was taken with other items.
Okay, then I had read it. So, uh, Hans, going through you. Are we ready to turn it over to Kim or?
Mr. Mayor, I, um, yes, I felt we wanted to go to Trump first. Wasn't that our intent?
Oh, oh, good, good. Thank you. Let's do that. Thank you for reminding me. The, uh, well, as, uh, Trump had requested if we could take their item first and switch 14 and 15. And unless we had someone who wanted to speak on item 14, Nat, do we have anyone in the queue on that?
Uh, no. In fact, I think we can, we can go to item 14 after, unless we want to just approve. We haven't put the chyron up, so we go 15 and then 14.
All right. I think we'll go to item 15 then, Ed. Yes, thank you, Hans, for that clarification. I'll allow you to turn it over to one of your competent staff members for a presentation, please.
Thank you so much. Uh, and following the tradition with using the letter C as in Charlie, I hand it over to Chris Schmidt.
Very good.
Well, thank you very much, Hans. I appreciate the introduction. Uh, Mayor and Council, I'm, uh, my name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a senior associate planner for the city and I'm working with Trump's representatives on this project. Uh, and so I will present my screen now. And I think it's up. If I could get a courtesy nod from a council member to confirm. Perfect, thank you, Ed. Uh, so here we are. We're looking at a, uh, project to develop a, a new parking lot for the Coolman Hospital. Uh, and I just wanted to start with this image showing the overall area of, of the hospital and their surrounding grounds. And so you see the three, uh, existing parking lots, which are highlighted with the, with a star. Uh, one, if you can see my mouse, uh, on the north side, one at the center, which is their underground lot, and then one on the south side. Uh, and then beneath that south lot, which is the, uh, which is their, uh, Carmel Hill Professional Center lot, uh, is the proposed project site for the new hospital. So among the three existing lots, Trump has, uh, I believe it was over, it was over 1,000 parking spaces. I think it was 1,065. And they're currently operating at about 150 space deficit. Um, so I just wanted to add a couple of statistics about Trump, uh, taken from their website. So in 2018, they had, uh, almost 13,000 admissions, uh, 53,000 emergency visits, and 348,000 outpatient visits, which are, I believe, were generally at different sites. So they have a different services at their site. Uh, and the nearest hospital is, uh, Selina Valley Memorial, just about 20 miles away. Um, so it is imperative that our hospital is able to work efficiently and have enough parking for customers or patients and staff. Um, so back in May, uh, the Planning Commission received the same report and unanimously recommended approval of this project. So I just wanted to show, uh, the project site itself. Uh, so here you see the site plan for cost, uh, for the parking lot. Uh, and just note, uh, and I'll throw this on a later slide, in those, those, uh, kind of gray textured areas, those are, uh, the steep sites, uh, steep, steep areas on the site, which exceed 25% trade, which is one of the things that we're asking the council to approve. Uh, typically, the general plan prohibits this type, uh, non-this type of development. The development in slopes that exceed 25% with the exception that the Planning Commission and, and in this case, the city council can make that approved. I also wanted to call out the two environmental, environmentally sensitive areas, which, uh, the designer of, the engineer of this, uh, project designed, designed for the development area to not impact those areas. Uh, and that's something that we are supportive of. Um, you know, one key component, I guess, key components of this project is, is because of the steep slopes, uh, there are some relatively large retaining walls that are proposed. And here I've shown the first retaining, and that will be on the north side of the lot. Uh, and as you can see on the top image there, I've basically broken up the wall into several different polygons, which correspond to that bottom, uh, site plan graphic below to show what, what those impacts will be. So, uh, at, at really the highest points on kind of the, the, uh, northernmost corner there, we're looking at about 17-foot tall retaining wall. Uh, and using the construction method that we see on the bottom right, which is, uh, it's called the concrete. Basically, they set up this rebar, uh, structure and, and spray it with concrete and sculpt it into something that kind of looks like rock face. Uh, the secondary wall is, is located on the south side of the parking lot. Uh, it's, uh, it's the same sort of graphic. Uh, and then this is a different type of construction and Trump intends to plant it. And this is, this is example, although I think they're going, not going to use grass. I think they're, they've got several different plantings that they will have there. And that will help prevent erosion and other, other sorts of drainage issues as well. Um, you know, one of the primary things that staff wanted to ensure is that there's no visual impact to the scenic highway. And so we did have Trump install story poles and netting to go where that lot is and, um, some, you know, we, I drove up there and, and took a look. And here are some photos showing what that impact is. And these are not photos that I took. They were from Google Maps. But it was very clear to me when I drove by that you cannot, based on the top, see the development area, um, the steep, the steepness of the slope along the highway is so great that you really can't even see the tops of the trees that are at the top of the hill there. Um, and that moves on to the next issue, which was tree removals. So, um, they're proposing a substantial amount of trees for 470 trees of, of almost two acres of forest. Uh, and so we're requiring a one-to-one replanting race, replanting slash replacement ratio. Um, they, uh, opted for a couple of different methods. One is individual replacement plantings. They'll go and actual plant a tree that they pick out in a nursery. I think there are about 180 of those proposed for individual replacement. Then there were remaining 229, I believe it was. Uh, we, we use a method where they take the actual cones and boughs from the trees that are being removed. They chip them and then they, they, uh, basically cover the replanting areas with a 12-inch bed of, of that replacement material. And that actually really helps keep the same tree lineage in the forest. We want to maintain those trees, uh, in that forest to ensure that that forest, uh, that, that forest is maintained over time. Um, and, and as part of looking at this forest, uh, they did submit an arborist report and our, and the city's, uh, forester did visit the site as well. Uh, both had come to the conclusion that the forest itself was in declining health, was very mature. Uh, and a lot of the trees were suffering, uh, an infestation from hitchhiker, dork mistletoe, red-ringed cock, and bark beetles, which are typically parasitic, uh, either fungi or other types of, of, uh- are typically parasitic, either fungi or other types of organisms. And then additionally, a lot of the trees had major structural issues. So as part of the approval of this project, we're asking that the council adopt the mitigated negative declaration, which identified several different potentially significant impacts associated with aesthetics, agriculture, and, of course, really not agriculture, but forest resources, they fall under the same set of questions, biological resources, noise, and transportation. And so all of these impacts, technically significant impacts, will be mitigated in order to reduce those impacts to less than significant level. And those include things like using light fixtures that, that will, you know, lower their darkness when, when there's nobody around, they've got motion sensors. Or we are, we're also requiring a forest land mitigation plan, protection of those trees that will be maintained, pre-construction and during construction monitoring, or protected species, and. And then I also wanted to talk about some of the general plan policies that we looked at for this project, namely those in the economic element, public facility element, and the urban design element. And we believe that this project supports the general plan because we want to support our hospital and its expansion, well, it's, they're known services, this is just to protect happening existing services, so we want to ensure that they operate efficiently and are able to have their staff on site and give them park funds as needed. Likewise, as I mentioned, that urban design element seeks to further avoid illumination from the hospital, and this is why we've got this mitigation for, for light fixtures. And as I mentioned, so development in areas that exceed 25% requires approval from the Planning Mission, in this case, the City Council, and so I've highlighted those areas in form. And the following slide discusses what that, that safety element, general plan policy is. And please let me know if you'd like me to go back to this slide. So this, this policy basically states that, as I mentioned, development in these areas is generally prohibited, less, the slope, the amount and slope at the location so severely restricts development that inception is warranted. And so the planning did find that acceptance is warranted, and that this project should proceed. And that was, as I mentioned, a unanimous decision. So that concludes my presentation. The staff recommendation is to approve the project by adopting mitigated declaration and approving the unit permit, which adopts the PC Plan Amendment, which includes just this project and allows development on slopes that exceed 25%.
All right, thank you, Chris. And do we have a presentation, getting an echo interesting, are we, do we have a presentation from any of the representatives from CHOMP?
We do have, CHOMP did call in, I don't know if they have a presentation, but they do, they did call in as part of public comment.
All right, let's, let's just go to public comment then, and if you can, start off with CHOMP, because it's obviously their presentation and project, please.
Okay, we'll do. Hello, you're live with the Monterey City Council.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Anthony Hallmark on behalf of Montage Healthcare. Staff has given an excellent presentation this evening about the project. It is to address parking deficiencies that we have at our facility. We did put up the netting, as staff mentioned, I do have a couple of additional slides that show some of the netting in greater detail, but I won't take your time this evening, this evening unless you'd like to see them, while there are further questions about that, I'll just leave it with the fact that it is effectively invisible inside the forest and the retaining walls, and the cuts will not, will not be seen from the highway or from downtown Monterey. So unless you have any other questions for us, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Now, let's continue, please, with any?
Yep, no other public comment.
All right, returning to council for motions, deliberations. Okay, we have a motion by Ann Albert to approve the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Ed Smith.
I do want.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just want to acknowledge the Planning Commission and staff's hard work on this one. This is a variation to, you know, the very thoughtful prohibition of overdeveloping on slopes. This one requires an extensive amount of planning and environmental concern of replanting in a very successful location with a community hospital that's going to be shepherding. It sounds as though all of the issues have been addressed, and I want to, I want to show my appreciation to the planning commissioners for their hard work and their thoughtful questions, and I appreciate the fact that the applicant has addressed the issues that were surfaced by staff and the planning commission, so I'm satisfied and can support it.
Okay, any other comments? All right, say nothing, then we'll do roll call, please.
Councilmember Haha. Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. And, and good, and thank you, let's go back to item 14 then, before we recess. And I think the recommendation here is our use permit is currently required to allow a home occupation, and it's suggested that this could be done administratively by our staff, but using exactly the same requirements, mitigations, rules, and restrictions that are currently in place to make sure that any kind of home occupation does not impact the neighbors. And that's really what it's all about. So Hans, back to you, and maybe Kimberly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a quick presentation that our Community Development Director, Cole, with a C, has prepared.
Thank you very much, Mayor, I'm just pulling up my screen, can everyone see this, my screen?
Yes, courtesy nod.
Thank you very much. This evening, you're considering an amendment to our municipal code regarding our home occupation permit process. Just for clarity, a home occupation is a business activity conducted in a residential unit that's incidental to the main or principal use of the lot, which is a residence.
Excuse me, Kim, can you expand that to slideshow, so it's going to be large enough for our home viewers on the TV screen?
Can you see that better now?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, thank you. So the proposal is to make home occupations principally permitted uses subject to regulations, and those are the same regulations that basically exist today. But it eliminates the need to actually go through a home occupation permit process. Right now, there is a fee associated with that, there's additional time for public noticing, and it delays the issuance of home occupation permits. So we're looking for a way to make it easier for people to obtain home occupation permits. It's an incentive for small businesses to start, and it really is addressing the transformation of how business is conducted. Basically, today, for everybody that is working at home for COVID should have a home occupation permit. That's really unrealistic in these times. I do want to point out that the ordinance will continue to have protections for neighborhoods from nuisance home businesses. And you may ask partially, well, why is staff also proposing this? We have incurred staff reductions, and we're having a difficult time keeping up with the paperwork and the permit process for home occupation permits. And as we discussed it collectively as a staff, we see a real opportunity to streamline the process, but at the same time, protect the neighborhoods. So the regulations will continue, and I thought it would be helpful, I would just share our existing regulations. Basically, only the residents can be engaged in the business. The maximum number of residents engaged in the business onsite would be two, so typically that's a husband or wife, or it could be some other situation. The home occupation cannot create significant additional vehicle or pedestrian traffic. Sometimes that has occurred with deliveries, so if that occurs, that's something that can't happen. There can be no sign out in front of the house, there can be no advertisement with the business address. And we did make a slight change to the code here to not only include print materials, but also social media. So basically, the address of the home should not be advertised. There can be no visible storage or display, no exterior evidence of the home occupation, the off-street parking must be retained, no hazardous processes involved, no significant increase in utilities. The owner, if you are a renter, has to provide permission for your home occupation, and you must comply with all local, state, and federal laws. So those regulations will continue. We did receive a couple letters expressing concerns about lots of visitors, parking of trucks and equipment on streets, and machinery. And if we have a home occupation that is doing that, those are things that can be enforced against on a nuisance basis, much like if somebody is doing something at their home that's noisy and out of compliance with our noise regulations. So in this case, if the business is inconsistent with our home occupation standards, we can cite that business. Our current citation is $250 for the first violation, and it increases after that. Ultimately, if the city is unable to remedy the nuisance, the city can file a lawsuit against the business to abate the nuisance situation. Luckily for us, I would say 99% of our home occupations have not been a problem in our community. So in summary, we're recommending that the council introduce, read by title only, and pass a first reading of the ordinance changes. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, do we have any questions from the council? No, public comment? Nat, any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, so I think the motion would be to adopt by title only the ordinance to repeal Monterey City Code Section 3826G, and to add the Monterey City Code Section 38-108 to allow home occupations without a permit process, so I'll so move.
I'll second that with a comment and question.
Yes, please do.
Yes, so there's a very accurate list on page 123 of the packet that outlines what Kimberly just listed. There are 12 items that I would call as the insurance that, or assurance that the homes are not being disturbed by an adjacent business next door, across the street, and so forth. So what this does is requires us to have a professional responsive code enforcement to be prepared to respond to the complaints. There were several letters in our packages that pointed out some history, and sadly, some of those cases with some of those addresses, many years ago, I actually responded to those same addresses with that same problem, which means from time to time, there are addresses that can be a problem. So I want to just state that the code enforcement piece has to be robust, and the question for Kim is, we start at $250, is there methodology currently in our fee structure that, that can escalate, second offense, 500, third offense, 1,000? So what, what's the fee schedule going to be on this?
So I did look up the, the violation fee for home occupation, it's 250. There is an escalation if it doesn't get resolved, I didn't look up the escalation amount, though, so I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, so with my comments, I, I would support the motion, but with the encouragement that staff reviews the processing in terms of the, the fee structure, the escalation, and for those nuisance residents that we deal with from time to time, or that fall into that category of one of those 12 that makes the use incompatible. So I want to commit to the fact that we, we must ensure that this is compliant, and that we don't see our neighbors being disturbed because there's a machine shop, a paint shop, you know, any kind of incompatible business. So I think we need to have the teeth in the ordinance to be able to do that, and so if we can, if we can review that and come back with any adjustments later, I can support this.
All right.
I could interject for just a second, the administrative citation process, the second violation within a 36-month period does increase, and then it, it increases by 100%, and then it increases by 200% for the third site.
Okay, so.
That's by default, and the council could, if you want to consider adopting a higher schedule for these, you could do that as well.
Yeah, I, I want to review that, I'm not ready to say which way I'd want to go, I'll, I'll review that and maybe propose that in coming months. But I, I think this needs to be a shift in terms of a commitment, that we've got to have code enforcement that is responsive, professional, prompt, and tracks this, and that we don't have to have multiple calls in an address before. There's, code enforcement is typically the verbal, the warning, then there's a letter, maybe a second letter, and then a citation. I think this needs to flip around, too. They get one warning, and then there's a citation, and we escalate that quickly to stop the nuisance, because the neighbors deserve to have peace and quiet in their residential neighborhoods.
Well said, Ed, thank you, other comments?
I guess I would just add to that, if I could, I imagine that there's going to be a lot of demand on code enforcement as we move forward here, especially as there is this, this fine now for people not wearing a face masks, and, and that being the response for that. So I just kind of asked staff, I wonder, how are the different priorities being established in regards to code enforcement, given the circumstances? Because in my mind, I would think that the, the wearing of masks and, and keeping the public safe is a priority over, although I think there is a need to protect the community in, in keeping it quiet, I think that the safe, health and safety of individuals are somewhat of a priority.
Hans, do you want me to respond to that? Or do you?
Yeah, yes, please.
So regarding mask enforcement, obviously, that's a new work effort with the COVID situation, and we have hired contract code compliance staff to help. And so we have contract compliance staff that will be working 30 hours a week on just mask enforcement, visiting businesses, and working with the general public on compliance. We just hired a new code compliance officer, and he started last Wednesday, and so he is picking up the caseload, and so he, we will be working through those cases, as well as he will at least devote a couple hours a day to mask enforcement as well. Over the 4th of July weekend, we had both our full-time staff and our contract code compliance staff working for 10 hours a day on mask enforcement. So for holidays, we may bump it up.
Awesome, thank you, Kim, that was a beautiful response.
Very good. All right, then I think we'll do roll call, please, we do have a motion and a second.
Any comments, Mr. Mayor?
Public comments, thank you, did we have any public comments?
We don't have public comments.
Thank you for the reminder. All right, roll call, please, Clementine.
Councilmember Haha.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Roberson.
Yes. All right, I think, are we ready to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if we could go back to the Mills Act one more time, there, there was an intention by staff to have a verbal amendment to the motion, and since we went so fast through it, we, we didn't get to that, so I'm asking if Kim could briefly explain what the amendment for the Mills Act was, or maybe Kristi, who's still on the call here, Kristi Savodan.
Okay, yeah, let's do that, so we're going to need a, a new motion, or will we just make an additional motion?
I think we need a new motion, right, Kristi?
Yes, and I'm pulling up the PowerPoint that I closed out, so give me a second here.
Right, well, let's certainly do a do-over, and we open public comment as well.
Yep.
No do-overs. No do-overs. That's what the kids say, no do-overs. All right, Kristi, what was it that you wanted to bring to our attention, please?
Sure, thank you. So, let's see. I think I need to from current slide. Okay, can you see the slide?
Yes.
Okay, so the planning commission had added a special condition, which I forgot to include in the resolution, sorry. On May 12th, the planning commission added this special condition here that you can see, the applicant shall remove the aluminum siding to expose the redwood siding, replace the aluminum windows with wood sash windows, and replace the exterior doors with appropriate wood doors. They just wanted a little more assurance that the property owner would would restore the house.
All right, now, was the property owner in agreement with that amendment?
They were.
Okay, thank you.
They were at the meeting, yes.
We'll see if there's any public comment on that omission. Nat, anyone?
The Chyron just went up about five seconds ago, so let's just give it another 15 seconds for folks to quickly dial in.
And who made the original motion on this one?
I'd have to pull up the minutes, which I'm not sure I have in front of me. I believe.
Yes, okay.
Mayor Roberson, we see no public comment at this time.
Okay, so then I guess the appropriate motion would be to rescind the former action and then replace it with the recommendation that's before us, including the amendment of May 12, 2020? Does that cover it?
Yes.
Yep, that's good.
So move.
So move. And a second?
All right, roll call, please.
Sorry, that took me a second. Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, it's 5:30. We made it. We'll recess and see everyone at 7 o'clock. And meanwhile, I'll try to get this camera working. Thank you, everyone. See you a little later. To our evening session. The first thing we're going to do is do the Pledge of Allegiance. And our very considerate Assistant City Manager has that flag ready for us, I believe, on screen.
Yes, we do. Here we go. And this is a flag of showing our flag over Colton Hall.
Oh, good, thank you. So if everyone would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. So we want to again welcome everyone who's watching this digitally. We certainly hope to see everybody in person one of these days, but we'll just have to see how that goes. And I know many of us, I'm feeling the lack of, it's just kind of disorienting. Things just seem out of sorts or out of whack or just different. And I know it can take its mental toll, so we all need to be there for each other, practice social distance, but keep in contact, especially with those in need. It's my pleasure to introduce our city council to everyone, our caring council, Dan Albert, Alan Hoffa, Tyler Williamson, and Ed Smith. And it's my honor to be the mayor of the city, which we all love and take care of together. So we're going to go ahead with public comments that are not on the agenda. And so if you wanted to speak to the report about the transient occupancy tax, the ordinance with respect to face coverings, and an update on COVID-19 protocols from the city, we ask that you wait and call in then. Meanwhile, if you have a public comment that's not on the agenda, we're here to listen. By law, we can't really respond. We can give information, of course, but not discuss. And then lastly, it should be within the jurisdiction of our city. So we're going to ask Assistant City Manager Rojanasa Thira to just explain how you can join us and how the meeting will be conducted.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Roberson. And at this time, we'll go ahead and put up the Chyron on the screen. We do encourage members of the public to watch this broadcast on YouTube Live, which has a short delay of approximately 10 seconds. You can watch at youtube.com/cityofmonterey or on the YouTube app, on Google Play, or the Apple App Store. To make a public comment when viewers are watching live on YouTube or also on Channel 25, you can look at the Chyron, also known as the lower third caption on the bottom of your screen, and call into the conference line. That phone number is area code 831-225-0330. When prompted, enter the code 1927648. Once you've entered the system, you can dial *5 to virtually raise your hand, and you'll be added into the queue to speak. Callers will be automatically unmuted until it's their turn to speak. We ask the callers, please turn off all television or computer speakers or go to another room. When you're connected by phone, as any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. We look forward to receiving public comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nat. And at this point, do we have general public comments, not agenda items, that you know of?
We have no callers for general public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then in that case, why don't we just go right ahead into the public appearance items? And the first one is transient occupancy tax informational report. This is a topic that's new to us. And I think we're just go right ahead into our staff because they'll take an opportunity to explain the fiscal devastation, yes, I use that word, the fiscal devastation, that we're facing and basically the entire country's facing, government in particular, and what one of the remedies, potential remedies is to take care of the structural deficit in the long term. So with that, I'll turn it over to our courteous city manager, Hans Uslar. And it's all yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, I will give you an introduction to the topic. And then it is our Finance Director, Lauren Lai, who will provide you with way more detailed information than I can do. So I'm looking forward to listening to that as well. With that, please allow me to share my screen with you. So tonight, we will be discussing with you our suggested course of action with respect to the transient occupancy tax. We are proposing to consider putting a potential ballot measure in front of the voters in November 2020. Tonight, you will receive a report from us. You have a chance to ask questions and receive answers. You have a chance to receive public input. And of course, you can provide direction after you, the council have discussed the pros and cons of that topic. Tonight is not the night where we are asking you to put it into the ballot, onto the ballot measure. Tonight is basically the night to provide you, the public, the stakeholders, the residents, with a comprehensive information about the TOT. And more importantly, to receive input from stakeholders. And of course, most importantly, for city staff to receive input from you, the city council, hopefully also with providing us with directions for the next steps. Transient occupancy tax is a critical, critical tool in the city of Monterey. Our quality of life depends to the greatest extent possible on the revenues that we derive through the TOT, the transient occupancy tax, which is also known as a hotel tax. And as the mayor introduced this topic and he spoke about devastation, our revenues have drastically declined. And just to remind you, our number one revenue in the city of Monterey is the hotel tax, the transient occupancy tax. And our second is the property tax. The third are the fees and charges. And the fourth is actually sales tax. So just to show you the hierarchy in which the hotel tax ranks. And it outranks the income that we have in normal years by at least two and a half times of that that we get through property tax. The city of Monterey, and that's a knowledge that we gained over the past weeks and months, relies more heavily than any other city in the state of California on the income of TOT as it is proportionate to the general fund. There's one exception, that's Anaheim. And Anaheim has a greater proportion of TOT that make up their general fund revenues. But Monterey, the city of Monterey, is a second behind Anaheim with respect to the TOT coming into our city and consisting the biggest bulk of revenues in our general fund. And that explains probably also, again, a few of those measures that you, the council, had to take over the past weeks and months. Because again, our economy, our hospitality industry is going through a great deal of devastation and tribulations right now. And as such, of course, the council was asked to do a lot of tough decisions, which you have done over the past months. Our services, our programs in the library, in the sports center, in our recreation centers, they heavily depend on significant general fund contributions. None of those programs are self-sufficiently funded. They all depend on inflow from our general fund, from our general fund revenues in order to sustain. Clearly, a library is the stance out of the list of services that I just described because the library in itself is a library that provides 99% of their services, if not 100% of the services, for free right now. And we've spoken about the sports center, we've spoken about the recreation centers. And you know that the general fund provides additional funding for us to provide those core services. So the general fund and the revenues for the general fund are very important to sustain our quality of life, which is also defined through services provided through the library, the sports center, and the recreation centers. But also, our long-term fiscal sustainability and stability really depends on our revenues. And we have facility needs, we have liabilities, we have a rainy day fund that we need to fill up again or that we might even draw down a little bit more over the next coming months or years. So TOT plays a highly, highly important role in our city. And even if we continue service reductions in those facilities that are described to you, libraries, sports center, rec center, conference center, even if we continue to have some sort of service reductions in the future, we still have to fund additional services that do not have really revenues, such as the park maintenance, the urban forestry maintenance, maintenance of our playgrounds, the window on the bay, the recreation trail. And we have teams working in streets that are fixing our streets. Not everything that we do in the right way is funded by gas tax or Measure X or SB 1 or our Measure P and S. So there are still elements that the general fund funds for the street maintenance. Last but not least, building maintenance. The city hall, most of our buildings are standing around for quite a while. 1849, 1848 Colton Hall was built. So we need to maintain those buildings. We need to continue to fund public safety services. We have four fire engine companies working in the city of Monterey. One in New Monterey, two downtown Monterey, and one out in the Montecito neighborhood. So we have four engine companies that we need to continue to fund. We have a police department, a public service, public safety department. We have the multidisciplinary outreach team that provides social services for homeless. And of course, last but not least, you have general government functions also that are paid out of the general fund that do not really recover costs through programming or fees or other charges. So in sum, what we are discussing tonight is the potential to look into an increase of the hotel tax as we feel it is necessary from a staff perspective to be able to restore certain services that are so essential to our city. And as my first word, my first sentence this evening was, the TOT, the transient occupancy tax, is a critical tool for the city of Monterey. It is absolutely critical for us that we look at that question tonight and that we consider using a TOT increase as an essential revenue tool for us to stabilize our budget and also to be able to be restoring a great deal of those functions right now that we simply cannot fund right now. So with that overview, I will hand it over to Lauren and ask her to please continue. And I ask her to take over the screen and present on by herself.
Myself?
Yeah, you can take over the screen now, Lauren.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the public. As the city manager mentioned, we're talking about the transient occupancy tax, or TOT, also known as the hotel room tax. This evening, when we present, we're going to hopefully answer some key areas. Specifically, why are we talking about TOT? What does it mean and what are we recommending? How do we go about this and when does this all need to happen? Typical in these deliberations is we'll listen to council's questions and public questions, answer them to the best of our ability. And at the end of this presentation, we're hoping to get some direction as to the next steps. So hopefully, we'll be able to answer some questions that members of the public and council have in mind. So why are we talking about TOT? We talked about TOT and sales tax in 2019. As members of the public recall, we had numerous town hall meetings and engagements with the council and the public. They were very, very fruitful. And we also did a survey. And with that, we went forward with the public relative to Measure G, a half-cent sales tax. So why are we talking about TOT now? It seemed early, right? Really, COVID-19, it's changed everything significantly. And as we've been very transparent with the council and the public and starting in April, the fiscal '20 budget year has a 16.3% deficit, $13 million out of our general fund. The year that we just started, fiscal '21, is an $18 million or 21%, 21.7% reduction. So these are staggering amounts that we have to cope with, not only in restoring our services, but what we already had on the table before COVID-19. And so the city manager went into that, and we'll go into that again. I think importantly in our public process is being very transparent and engaging the public. And we've done that from the very beginning, from back in 2019, and certainly during the pandemic, when we've had a lot of updates with the media, the public, the town hall meetings, and also the fiscal updates in April, May, and June. This slide might be familiar with some of you. This shows the general fund revenues historically starting in fiscal '14. And as you can see, the fiscal general fund revenue actually improves. The yellow and orange columns are fiscal '20 and fiscal '21. As you could see, the huge decline, it's significant, the loss. the loss that we're experiencing because of COVID nineteen. And so that's why we're really talking about T O T at this junction. I think what's fair to have a conversation with the public about when we talk about taxes, because I'm also a taxpayer, is what have we done lately? And what have we done already? And certainly, I'm proud to say that the council has shown so much leadership, so much boldness and courage in making some very tough decisions in facing this pandemic collectively with the community. We've taken significant actions already. We've defunded C I P and our neighborhood community improvement projects. Those were huge steps. These are valued programs that make a tremendous difference in our community. And we we had to take those steps to create one-time funding to shore up some of the problems we're facing. As a service organization, we also made a tough decisions around staff reductions. We eliminated vacant positions. And as spoken earlier this afternoon in the four o'clock session, employee groups came forward and volunteered salary concessions to be a part of solving this problem. And so we applaud the employees and the council for these efforts. Department heads and the employees within all the departments put their heads together to come up with program reductions. So in June, council approved fifteen million dollars of overall reductions in programs, services, including staffing. And we will see a reduction in the excellent services we have because that level of reduction is very noticeable. In addition to solving this problem, we also transferred funds from various savings, such as technology and vehicle savings. We have a rainy day fund technically called the Economic Uncertainty Fund. And during a pandemic, it makes a lot of sense for us to use that. So council approved using one point five million dollars of that. We created a reopening and hiring fund and put that one point five million dollars in there in addition to the employee concessions that we can move responsibly to reopening these valued services that the community has come to enjoy. Last but not least, we've worked very diligently from the beginning on economic development because we know that we need to focus on restoring our local economy because it's the basis of our jobs here, it's the basis of our quality of life and our government revenue. And that includes the L A S P where we were giving up to a million dollars to small businesses by way of grant. We're also implementing a program for written assistance for those that have been unemployed here because of the pandemic. We also took action as the council to defer rents for our commercial tenants that lease property from the city of Monterey. And we continue our excellent partnership with N C C V B, M C H A, the Chamber, and the Monterey County Foundation. And the bottom line is, we're talking about T O T because even with all of these actions and strategies, it's not enough to restore the services to the level that this community has come to enjoy. So what are we considering tonight? The staff recommendation, as stated in the staff report, is that we'd like to present to council and the public an increase of T O T of two percent. The current tax rate is ten percent, and we're proposing to increase that to twelve. Importantly, when we look at this is, what is a relevant analytics? How do we put this in the context of economic impact? So we're going to present to you two slides. One is the T O T rate relative to other cities within the county. And then also another slide which presents to you what N C C V B, who is the expert here regionally for hospitality, deem as other regional competitors. And we'll compare the twelve percent rate, the ten percent rate against these two regions. So let's start with the first one, which is Monterey County. What this slide shows is the cities and the county within Monterey County itself. And as demonstrated there, the city of Monterey is in green. We are at ten percent currently. And as shown in that box, nine of the thirteen cities, including Monterey County, have T O T rates that are currently higher than the city of Monterey. So as you could see there, ten percent is really the lowest rate within the county. We, as the city of Monterey, have the lowest T O T on the peninsula. And so Delray Oaks is at ten percent, but they don't have a hotel operator. So we are the lowest T O T rate along the Monterey Peninsula. And that's very relevant as those that come to visit and they look at various hotels in the region. Importantly is to broaden our optics as to how competitive would the city of Monterey be amongst other jurisdictions that N C C V B benches relative to where these tourists may enjoy their time and money. So we're looking at Santa Barbara County, the Newport Beach area, San Francisco, the Napa area. And based on N C C V B's current competitors, Monterey remains the lowest T O T operator. So based on these two analytics, staff is comfortable with the two percent recommendation. And we wanted to summarize that in a couple of slides. We hope that would easily present what we've studied. We also want to represent that T O T is charged and hotels also charge other fees. So we have a conference center that in partnership with the hotel operators, we have a beautiful conference center which has a debt. The debt is being paid for through what's called the Conference Center C C F D. This fee is tapped on top of the room rate in order to repay the construction cost of the conference center. And as shown there, the three hotels that are adjacent that benefit the most from the conference center pay four point one five percent by their guests. Then we have ten full-service hotels that pay one point six percent and fifty-four hotels that pay point eight percent. We also have a T I D which goes towards our N C C V B marketing. This is paid by the guests, two dollars per night for the full-service hotels, a dollar per night for limited-service hotels. This goes towards regional marketing and promotion. Other charges that the hotels may charge to guests may include resort fees, property fees, Wi-Fi fees, parking fees, and a couple and others that are charged by the hotels themselves. So we wanted to be very transparent about our fees. Importantly is that if guests are paying for the tax, it's important for us as the municipality to explain what we are doing as a partner in rendering and providing services to our guests, our visiting guests. And as the city, we provide a world-class destination. We're world famous and people know us just based on name recognition. In addition to the world-class destination and the quality that they experience, we provide year-round trolley services, which we finance. We have the window on the bay that the city maintains, recreation trails, Alastair Park, pristine beaches. We have a lovely marina and wharves with a lot of activities. We have historic museums with a lot of content and programs. We have public safety through police and fire protection, streets. Downtown has wonderful character. And we have world famous and world-class events that draw people from near and far. Importantly in this partnership with our hospitality industry is our promotion of individual guests and also our group bookings. So with N C C V B, we have nine hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars from the general fund that we appropriate to N C C V B for regional marketing. That's a big investment. In addition, because we know that group bookings have a multiplier effect, the city's general fund pays four million dollars for our conference center's sales and marketing staff to ensure that we are a good partner with our hospitality industry because we know it's a huge part of our economy. The bottom line is, the city provides a world-class destination and we value our hospitality partners in doing business here at the city of Monterey. How much are we proposing to increase our T O T? Staff is recommending that we propose a two percent increase before the voters based on what we've talked about and the analytics that we presented to you. We've been asked to explain what does that generate? And because of COVID nineteen, it's a large range. Two percent can raise between two point eight million dollars in the initial years up to possibly five point six million dollars based on what we know today. Staff recommends that this be effective January one, twenty twenty-one. And so that would take effect shortly after the general election. Let's take a moment to talk about the phased-in of rates and what we would consider if we talked about phasing in rates. And so let's talk about some of the advantages and some of the disadvantages and the legislative nuance as well in terms of the phased-in rate concept. And when we talk about phasing, let me just take a moment to explain to the public what that means. Two percent could be phased in at one percent and one percent or two percent out the gate. And so in doing that, what we would want to consider in balance is some of the advantages. The advantages would be, what services do we want to restore? How much money do we need to raise? And when do we need those dollars to come in, right? Because as we phase it, the dollars will come in less and increase over time. Also with COVID nineteen, we have a lower base as well, as I demonstrated in the second bullet point there. So those are some of the advantages, right? What are some of the, what are we going to get from the revenue? Some of the disadvantages of the higher tax rate will be the concerns to our hospitality partners as to the impacts on our guests. Will it change the decision of guests to perhaps vacation elsewhere? Will it have an economic impact? Will it personally change someone's decision to not vacation here? And so the elasticity of demand. And last but not least, we are governed by the election process in that the election question can only be seventy-five words. If we craft a complex, multi-tiered phased-in rate, we need to be thoughtful about whether or not we could put that easily into a seventy-five-word ballot question for members of the public to make an informed decision. So a one-year T O T would bring in, one percent T O T rate would bring in one point four million dollars in the initial years. So let's play out the difference, T O T percentages a little bit more. So if we have a conversation about this at the end of the presentation, there's a slide we can refer back to. In the initial year, revenue increases per T O T percent is as follows. A half percent would generate about seven hundred thousand dollars. One percent would generate one point four million. Two percent would generate two point eight million. And three percent would generate four point two million, and so on. And so that gives you some points of reference if we would have a more robust conversation on this point later. Additional T O T revenues will also increase N C C V contribution. In the past, we've kind of indexed our N C C V promotional contribution against our T O T revenues. So certainly, our promotional revenues will have some correlating increase as well, which is really important because we want to support promotions for our hospitality industry. Staff does want to say fairly firmly that we don't believe a one percent T O T would be sufficient in achieving, restoring services, and stabilizing our financial position for the city of Monterey. So let's talk about the legal nuances. I'll try to make this simple. Currently, our charter approved by the city of Monterey voters back in the nineteen eighties includes sixteen percent of our T O Ts going to N C I P. And that's a great program and it's worked really well. And we have a lot of hallmark projects throughout the city that has demonstrated its success. Staff is recommending that we retain that sixteen percent on the current T O T of the ten percent rate. And if the council is motivated and willing, what we would present to the council and the public is possibly a charter amendment where we would retain the sixteen percent to N C I P on the ten percent. And that one hundred percent of the new T O T revenue would go to the general fund. That charter amendment would be placed on the November election. And it would require fifty percent plus one vote to be passed. Again, that would retain the sixteen percent allocation to N C I P. It would not reduce it in any way. In addition, what it will also do is would then characterize the T O T that's being presented to the voters in November as a general tax. In it being a general tax, it will require fifty percent plus one vote of voters to approve a two percent T O T increase or whatever derivative it is that council puts before the voters. And this is a very important nuance that I'm going to make sure the council and the public understands. Importantly, we would retain the sixteen percent that goes to N C I P on the current ten percent T O T rate. We also feel it's important that we expand the definition of operators. The city is not receiving all the revenue we should receive on T O T by way of the current definition. And we would recommend expanding the definition to include online operators and vacation rentals, whether or not they are permitted to operate in the city because the city should receive the revenues from the T O T to be imposed and collected and remitted to the city for our general fund purposes. So those are some legal nuances that we would need to navigate should we move forward with T O T. When does this need to happen? So being a general election and also given the rapid pace of COVID nineteen, staff is recommending that we bring this forward to the general election on November third. With that, we'd have to file all the documents with Monterey County Clerk on August seventh. Because it's a general tax, council would need to approve by way of two-thirds of council, for four out of five of you would need to approve the resolutions putting this before the voter. Because of the August seventh deadline and because we do know when council member cannot attend the next meeting, their next regularly scheduled meeting, we would present to council the idea of bringing forward any resolution at the special meeting of Wednesday, July twenty-ninth. Again, the November third election ballot measured would require fifty percent plus one voter to approve, should it be put before the voter as a general tax. It would be effective January one, twenty twenty-one. With that, I'll conclude by saying that T O T is an essential revenue tool for the city and for the council to consider. We also have a cautionary reminder that even with T O T revenues, if this is approved, we should have a conversation about the service levels that we can financially sustain in the long term. With that, we're here to listen to what the council and the public has to say about this very important matter and hopefully answer any questions you might have. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager at this point.
Yeah, thank you, Lauren. Thank you for the insights and the report. You saw that there are various options out there. You saw that our hotels are being asked to charge T O T, to charge C C F D charges back. You saw that there is a small California tourism assessment, also per property, that the hotels pass on to the customers as well. That's a very small charge that is very hard to calculate. And then there is also the T I D that we divided up between a dollar and two dollar. And it's probably another point seven percent of an average hotel rate, which is the T I D. But what you also saw is that the hotels, like the airlines, are charging a lot of extra charges as well. When you go flying, you're paying now for your luggage. You pay for selecting a chair and you pay for the food that you want to consume. And it's kind of similar what the hotels have instituted as well. You see hotels in Monterey that charge resort fees, that charge Wi-Fi fees, that charge property fees. And those fees are really also not trivial. And so when you, when we want to compare apples to apples, it's a hard thing to do because you actually have the taxes, you have the C C F D fees. And then you have also individual fees that each hotel feels are necessary to recover the cost for their operation that they do not put into the room rates, but instead they are charging their customers those charges extra. So while we try to 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 present you the whole picture, it is rather complex to do that when you're comparing T O T between cities, when you're comparing T O T between competitors. Competitors also have surcharges in their individual rates. Napa Valley has a two percent on top of their thirteen percent T O T that the county charges there. So this is a complex topic in front of you. Our pitch to you is basically, we need to get into a level where we can restore some of where we can restore some of those services that, that, that were mentioned. Um, even, uh, today, we cannot predict right now, uh, how our next couple of months will look like. Um, and so tonight is, is an informational meeting that we have and we are, we encourage you to ask us questions. And we also hope that, that we get a lot of, uh, good comments from our stakeholders. I know they, they are lined up out there and have some things to say about this. And, and then at the end of the evening, I hope that you, the council, um, can, uh, discuss amongst yourself and hopefully provide us with some direction that we need to bring back to you, uh, in July. Uh, Councilmember Smith will not attend the next council meeting, July twenty first. So we are hopeful that if we have to bring the, if we are allowed to bring the item back uh, for consideration as a tax measure, that we can do this on July twenty ninth as part of a special meeting. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I, that concludes the official staff presentation. And, uh, we are ready for, for questions from the council.
All right, we, we want to go ahead and ask questions before we go public. And Councilmember Allen, please start us off.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly, Lauren. So if the council decided to include the sixteen percent offset for N C I P, would that make this a special tax, um, or would it be a general tax? Uh, I was a little confused by that.
So Chrissy, I don't know if you're on the phone on the meeting. I would gander to answer yes, but I'd like to have Chrissy respond, please.
Hi, yes, it, it would be a special tax. Because it's a payment, um, to a specific purpose.
Thank you.
So then I have a question, Mayor, uh, on the same subject of the general tax. Um, since it is an amendment to the charter and it would be considered a general tax, does that mean that we could put a sunset on that tax, uh, for instance, in six years, seven years, eight years? Um, or does it still a, a permanent deal where it's on, uh, because our charter says that the tax is permanent? Somebody can answer that, I think.
Well, I, I, I think, uh, Chrissy is there, but I think the council can put a sunset clause on that, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. It can be a sunset clause.
Right.
But I mean, it can't be a sunset clause on the ten percent, but it can be a sunset clause on the two percent then, right?
Right. So in essence, there'll be two different ballot questions. One ballot question will be to amend the charter, which is really just restating, um, what we understand to be the intent of the council at the time, which was not to, um, turn it into a special tax for all future increases, but that, that was a special tax implemented at that time, not applicable in the future. So it would be in essence, a declaration of existing law. And then the second, uh, ballot measure question would be the actual increase and that language could include an expiration date.
All right, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thanks.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Ed, please.
Uh, anxious to hear, uh, some of the folks that are lined up. But before we get there, the staff report and the presentation talks about the term operator. So I think for the benefit of, of, uh, those calling and those watching, a little explanation about what that term means, because it's kind of the inside the baseball, we kind of know, but I think we should define what that means.
Um, I'll refer to the city attorney again. Basically, it's those that are subject to the tax.
Sure, um, in a nutshell, we want to be able to capture tax that is collected by companies such as Expedia and Travelocity, um, from the managing or booking agent to also be deemed an operator for purposes of this article. Um, you may recall there was some lengthy litigation over whether or not the T O T could be collected from those operators. And at the end of the day, we need to have the voters approve a change in our definition in order to, um, recover those funds.
And Chrissy, um, I know it's hard in today's world and COVID, but can you give any kind of a rough estimate of what the lost revenue is? Because we cannot collect from all operators like an Expedia, Travelocity. What are we losing each year?
It was, it was significant sums of money. I can, I can pull up a spreadsheet or maybe Hans knows offhand.
Yeah, I, I know it's in the millions of dollars that we are losing through the third party, uh, travel agencies uh, that are basically purchasing, uh, hotel rooms from our hotels at a discounted price. And they are remitting the T O T for the price that they pay to the hotel. Uh, let's say that an operator named, uh, the Sheraton, which we don't have in town. Let's say the Sheraton is selling, uh, hotel rooms for a hundred dollars a night, uh, two hundred rooms to expedia.com. Expedia.com then remits, uh, when they sell those rooms, uh, the T O T of ten percent of the hundred dollar per room that the Sheraton sold them to. But what they charge you as the purchaser of that room is of course a higher price because they buy the rooms from the Sheraton to, uh, sell it at a profit. So they will sell the rooms for a hundred twenty dollars and, but not remitting the additional, uh, what is it, one dollar, uh, twenty for, for the hotel rate to us. And that, uh, has added up to millions of dollars over the past years that are in effect owe to the city of Monterey. And what we try to do with this charter amendment is a cleanup language to ensure that, that the, uh, uh, that the third-party travel agencies and the hotels are responsible for correctly submitting the hotel tax that is based on the actual room rates charged to the customer and not charged to the, uh, hotel operators in the background when they sell blocks of room to third-party travel organizations.
Yeah, thank you for indulging me because I think that's probably the one thing universally, uh, people could agree on, that the cleanup language is essential. But, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's the only question I had for now.
I won't follow, I won't follow question, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Lauren, uh, you mentioned about the slide for the projected revenue increases. Um, are those based on today's revenues or pre-COVID revenues? So it was at one percent, I think it was seven hundred thousand dollars that we would attain. Is that, uh, last, last year's or would that be this year's, uh, projections?
It's based on this year's present, projections with COVID in effect. One percent is about one point four million dollars.
So that would mean that as the, um, as the hotels gets, or the hospitality recovers, uh, then it could be additional more in the next two or three years. So that's just, uh, uh, okay, good.
Definitely, one percent a year ago was something like two point eight million dollars.
Okay.
So the context of that is important because the speed at which we want to reopen services and financial stability is relative to how much we can generate in the near future as well. So the context of timeline and this depressed amount is important.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tyler, did you want to ask a question yet?
Yeah, there seem to be two things in regards to the city charter amendment. One being re, the retention of the sixteen percent on the ten percent, um, and not including that on any additional. And then the other element is, um, uh, the, the inclusion of these third-party providers. Would that all, would both of those go on, on one ballot measure or would they be two separate ballot measures?
It's two separate ballot questions.
So there would be three altogether if we chose to do the increase, the six, the...
So there's one ballot question, which if we leave the sixteen percent alone and don't have, um, any increase applied to it. So that would just sort of be a restatement of existing law. One ballot question, shall we amend the charter, um, to reflect that no tax increase subsequent to November nineteen eighty-eight, which is when that was adopted, is, um, going to be allocated to the Neighborhood and Improvement Community Program? So that's one ballot question. And then the second ballot question will say, shall the city amend its ordinance to increase the tax by two percent, let's say, and also change the definition of operator to include these online travel companies? Um, so that, that would be all in one ballot question.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, sorry, Mayor.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, yes.
So what, what I'm seeing, Alan, did you want to go? I'm sorry. Okay. So what, I, I guess I'm a little confused with the two thirds vote and, uh, fifty plus one. Is that because it's a general tax? That's the reason why now it's a fifty point one?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, I see. So this will be a little easier to pass than I, I assume than, uh, if we, if we change the charter completely.
Well, there's two, yes, in that regard, in that getting a general tax to pass is fifty percent plus one versus two thirds. The other aspect is, is it the desire of the council to have the new revenue allocate another sixteen percent to N C I P? N C I P is a great program and right now it generates about four million dollars or more a year in terms of project funding. Does the council wish to continue to allocate sixteen percent more to N C I P? Or do we prioritize that sixteen percent to other priorities, uh, and services in the city? Because that's the other policy decision here, right? It's not just a voting threshold, but with each new dollar of revenue, what are we going to fund?
I see. Thank you.
There's two policy decisions going on.
Okay, um, I have a question. It's, it's probably more generalized because much of the presentation so far has been about the increase and how it will go towards, uh, just basic city services. Police department, a fire department, our streets, our recreation department, uh, our library, uh, parking garages. We, we have a lot of assets in the city. When Measure G passed, we pointed out that about sixty-two percent of the sales taxes paid by visitors or tourists. So I often think, and I share this with people a lot, and that is we're a city of about twenty-eight thousand people. And, um, Europeans are especially surprised when they think about the Defense Language Institute, Naval Postgraduate School and the hotels, the aquarium and so on. You know what the assets are. So my question, how, well, what proportion of city budget actually is used are the services that our, our city budget provides, our services, all of the services I listed in our programs? Those benefit tourists as well as residents. Is that something we can quantify? How, how much of our budget, which is quite large for a city our size, how much of that budget is, yes, generated by the hotels and motels, we're grateful for that. But how much of that budget is expended on the large amount of tourism that we have? Have we ever thought about that or?
Yes, uh, yes, we have thought about that. It, it is, uh, it is not, um, a straight line analysis, so to speak, to do that because the one with the other is kind of benefiting from each other. We, we have a high service level, let's say, in the police department. Uh, and we can afford to have higher service levels because on the other hand, uh, the day population that swells in the city of Monterey to a population of two fifty thousand, sixty thousand, uh, uh, including our residents daily, uh, contributes to, through their sales tax, that we need to have a police force uh, that, 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 uh, is, is able to accommodate, um, uh, those type of, of population that with their, uh, calls for service. Uh, similarly with, with the fire department, uh, there, there is a good mix of calls that comes, uh, probably from, uh, visitors who, uh, suffer injuries or, or have some sort of an emergency that requires, uh, police or A M R to roll out there. And it, it is, um, difficult to say, Mr. Mayor, that, that we could say, uh, one third of our police force is basically, um, not, uh, necessary should we have no, no tourists here. So it, it is, it is a calculation that, an analysis that we can do and, and that, that would, we're basically work with a variety of assumptions. But unfortunately, it's not something that, that we can easily, um, define or quantify right now. Um, flip side is, um, uh, without this, uh, tourism industry, we wouldn't have the library we have, we wouldn't have the sports center we have, and we wouldn't have the recreation center that we have. So it's, it's, uh, um, it's, it, it is, it is a very challenging analysis that, that, that you're proposing and that I think might be really something that we should do as part maybe of a collaboration with a thesis student from Middlebury or so. Because I would be very interested in seeing that what happens if we dial everything back and say, let just have twenty-eight thousand people living in this town. Well, maybe we are not twenty-eight thousand then anymore because a lot of our folks are working in the, in the industry, uh, here. About seven thousand people are actually employed in the city of Monterey. So, uh, it is, um, it is a worthwhile, uh, undertaking, Mr. Mayor, to do that. It's just hard to pinpoint those numbers. But I think there are, uh, there are results that, that we can present at one time. And, uh, it's just right now a very interdependent network of revenues and service levels as well as service levels that clean-cut service just the residents without corresponding resident tax revenue, but tourism tax revenue.
Yes, and that's a good answer. And I think it just does show the interdependency of, of, uh, our city with the hospitality industry and how important it is to our city. But it, it's just kind of something that's, uh, I, I've thought and I, uh, certainly not asking for an analysis. But it, it just raises the question of what's, what's, uh, what is the tourist's fair share to help pay for these services? Yeah, okay. Any other questions before we get public comment? Then we could roll up our sleeves and see where we go. All right, now, um, the floor is yours and I think, so how many do we have queued up at this point?
Right now, we have, uh, five queued up. Folks have been reading the title on the bottom. And again, we would like to remind the public to dial eight three one two two five zero three three zero to call into the phone line and enter the code one nine two seven six four eight pound. And then dial star five to raise your hand. Our first caller, and I've got the three-minute timer, uh, up. Our first caller is Laura Pratt. Uh, hi, Laura. Thanks for joining us. Are you there, Laura?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yep.
Um, okay. Um, to speak about this because I've been in council for over ten years to raise the T O T. We, we are extremely low and should not be. Um, as I think is really important to note is that the T O T and the C C F D are passed through the, in other words, the moteliers do not pay them, they pass it through to visitors and they collect it and give it to the city. Um, these are extremely important fees that need to be paid. Uh, and they need to be paid timely. And I appreciate that the city is trying to go out to that a little more quickly, but hoteliers should not pay it. But from, the most extremely important is that this fee, the T O T has not been raised in thirty-eight years. So when, I'm sure a lot of the hoteliers are interested in the hospitality industry, they've heard of the line change. They can get, they can get asked how many times have they raised their room rate, room rate in thirty-eight years? Um, they need to do this, it's a dance of doing this, but because we are a new company and because we provide such expensive services, not only to our citizens, but to all the inhabitants, that's why they come here. The players will probably try to tell you that if they raise these fees or if we raise these, the T O T, and people will come here who go to our competing destinations. I would just say to them, you know, even during, because they have damage, or people are literally dying, people are still coming to stay in Monterey. They didn't blow them down, what's that? They're still coming here because we are in great competition. And they do get a lot of things delivered here, so even for the, um, they got very involved and even the rent runs on, but people still come here. Uh, so I do hope that you will raise this, but I hope you will raise it not by two percent, but by four percent, be more aligned with other competing destinations. We should be at fourteen percent, not ten percent. Uh, also, do you have raised the increase in the B B B? They get enough, I think, here, we have a lot of... They get enough, I think, here, million dollars a year in money for their marketing efforts. And I could have said that on this, it needs to be done more on a regular basis than every thirty-eight years. And I do agree with adding the third party to you. And things like that. Please do it. It needs to be done.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Laura. I know we sometimes have trouble hearing some folks more than others. So we'll go ahead and go to our next caller. And hope that, hope that our next caller, Kayla Fossum, we can hear her better. Hi, Kayla. Hi, Kayla.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you move away from your computer or your TV set?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, but we hear a lot of background noise. So if you could turn down your computer speaker or your TV set.
Okay, there's a big delay. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'm turning it off. Thank you.
Great.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, you got it. Your timer's on.
Okay, I hope you can hear me. Nat?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yep.
Hello?
Yep, hi, Kayla, can you hear us? Here we go. This is better.
This is Kayla Fossum, President of Villa Del Monte Neighborhoods Association. And first, I want to thank the staff and the council for all your due diligence in the financial budget crisis we're in. I know you've all put a lot of long hours in it. Um, I want to first point out that when the Measure G, the sales tax, was discussed earlier this year in my neighborhood, what I heard from the residents most is they also wanted to see the TOT put on the ballot. That did not happen. And now we, here we are in a budget crisis. Folks, we do not have a choice. This needs to be put to the voters, and it needs to be put to the voters in November. Um, two percent is not outrageous. I thought some of the most important slides presented by Lauren were the fact that Monterey is the lowest, not only on the peninsula, but for all of our competitors. I also thought, well, the mayor stole some of my thunder on the next point. The city provides services to visitors, window on the bay, recreational trail, parks, beaches. I mean, this isn't just about services to the residents, the library, et cetera. It is a symbiotic relationship between hospitality and residents. And I think it's important to note that, and tourists will come here. They're already flooding the area during the pandemic. They will continue to come. They will pay the extra two percent. And it's time to put this on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Kayla. Okay, our next caller is Rick Hoyer. Hi, Rick.
Greetings. My name's Rick Hoyer. I'm President of Monterey Municipal Taxpayers Association. I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm going to speak to a bit more of the technicalities. Back in eighty-eight, when residents voted and put, created the NIP, it was very clear in the ballot language that sixteen percent of the annual transient occupancy tax goes to the NIP. Council intent at that time is rather irrelevant. It's what did the people vote for? So it is very clear that if you don't have a companion charter measure, it is a special tax increase. I don't think you should necessarily be afraid of the two-thirds threshold to go that route. The second you start mudding the waters with a second charter measure to bifurcate what goes to the NIP and doesn't go to the NIP, you will have opposition against that that will definitely be there and be organized and run. The question ultimately becomes, you get fifty-one percent vote for the tax, but the charter measure fails. In effect, the tax fails. The cleanest is to do the two-thirds, keep it straight related to it. And on top of that, the added revenue from that extra increase, having the sixteen percent go to the NIP, will help make up the fact that the millions of dollars of approved projects that neighbors spent over ten years on processing and doing will be able to be done at a quicker level. The ability to catch back up and get those done from the future. It deserves to be the increase going to them as well. Keep it nice, keep it clean, and do it as a two-thirds special tax, recognizing what it is. And the aspect of being able to collect it from all operators is a very good positive step. But I tell you right now, because as a resident of Monterey, not as speaking at the Taxpayers Association, is you put that other charter measure on, I'll be running an active campaign against it. Because that's not what the voters intended when it was created back in eighty-eight. And nor should it be changed now. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Rick. Our next caller is Richard Rucello. Hi, Richard.
Hello, Nat, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm Richard Rucello. I want to give my personal opinion. My problem is with the staff recommendation and the fifty percent versus two-thirds. I feel it can then run around the city charter and run around Prop thirteen. If you're looking just at trying to get it to vote, to pass, you're not looking for failure. Whatever you decide on what you want to raise, think of Measure S. Measure S was a two-thirds vote, and it got the highest yes vote in the state of California. So if you start to complicate it and you try to change the wording of what the voters have already adopted, we have lost ten years of NIP projects that were approved. Uh, it's going to be a long time before we get NCIP together again. Enthusiac's exuberance on the pandemic is, has no factual basis. We're in this for a long term. I urge you to do a two-thirds vote, a simplistic increase, and get it passed. This is not the time to bring in negatives. And there are so many negatives in this recommendation, there's no political reality in it. Coming in November, we're going to have a mountain of taxes proposed on the ballot. The state is trying to tax its way out of this disaster. And the taxpayers are going to revolt. Don't give them a reason to revolt. So I'm recommending you go with a two-thirds and a cleaner, and don't change the city charter. I thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you, Richard. Our next caller is going to be Rick Aldinger. Hi, Rick.
Hi, hi. This is Rick Aldinger. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Monterey County Hospitality Association. There's certainly no question, we're facing challenging times and the decisions we collectively make today are going to have the potential to alter the rate of recovery from the pandemic we're in, as well as the long-term success of our community and our destination. When the decision was made to begin the much-needed renovation of the city's conference center, Monterey Hotels stepped up to fund the project. At the time, there was an agreement that because the hotel community was funding the conference center, the city would not seek an increase in TOT during that finding of duty period. Things changed, though. The hospitality industry has been among the worst hit economically during the pandemic, and the future is far from certain. The city's budget is far from healthy. Unemployment is high. And we've just learned, you know, a major rollback to the opening of our economy goes into effect tomorrow. The last thing Monterey hospitality industry needs right now is to be less attractive to our potential visitors. And in the group side, less competitive on our comp set. Bottom line is that, you know, a TOT increase right now is a bad idea. But a two-step sunrise increase of TOT, totally one percent, would certainly help ease the pain, gives the hospitality industry a better chance to recover. You know, as I said, the future is uncertain, and going beyond one percent at this time could be crippling. Let's get through this painful period before considering anything beyond that one percent. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Rick. Our next caller is going to be Chris Summers. Hi, Chris. Hi, Chris, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, I can hear you.
All righty. In regards to TOT, the pro-increase has a profound effect on the hotels to remain competitive in a post-COVID landscape. I've heard a comment that it is simply a pass-through tax that does not affect the hotels that are paid by tourists. It needs to be understood that the five largest hotels in Monterey depend heavily on group business, accounting for fifty percent or more of our total revenue. The business is booked by very savvy meeting planners. These meeting planners calculate every cost to them, which is total tax and not just TOT. So it is not fair to only present TOT and not total tax per destination. Post-COVID, we are already seeing meeting planners demand concessions of meeting room rentals, food and beverage minimum, and nearly nonexistent cancellation policies. So even before a TOT increase, I assure you each of our hotels in Monterey is fighting desperately to save group business. And most of this is falling into 2021 and beyond. Having an additional TOT is a cost of these groups simply puts us at a disadvantage of competitive destinations. More of these contracts that we lose to the competitive destinations, less TOT the city collects. Quite simple. As of now, there are multiple cities who have been proactive and gone and offered their hotels to defer their TOTs owed to them to help get them back on their feet. These cities include San Luis Obispo, Davis, Tabasco, and Big Bear. Although they have quite different hospitality environments, it's the mentality of these cities that understand the importance of hospitality and recovery that only hopes that we can get to be here in Monterey. Monterey is the only city I can find anywhere who's actually proposing to increase TOT after the most devastating economic and public health crisis of our time. We have an opportunity to facilitate the recovery of our community and return our hard-working people to their jobs. This increase will only delay the recovery and make it harder for each hospitality employee to get back to work. It's simply not the time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Next caller is going to be Esther Malkin. Hi, Esther.
Good evening, Esther Malkin. I am commenting, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, having attended all the budget meetings having to do with all of these same subjects back in October, all the way through the primaries and when we had the last election. So I'm not going to repeat all of those same reasons, but you guys hired a consultant, the consultant recommended that you put TOT on the ballot and it wouldn't harm the chances of failed staff going through. You didn't do it. This is overdue. The hospitality comments are, they act as if we are the only destination that's competitive and for this conference business. I'm in an industry that has conferences, and I can tell you that those conferences are not going to go somewhere else because everybody, everybody's in the same boat. They're not going to, they're not going to sacrifice going to Davis versus coming here. And those other cities have other industries. They have diversified. We have become our own worst enemy by not allowing the business climate to be friendly enough to attract other businesses. So that is one of the reasons why we're in the position we're in right now. But I want to remind everybody that the hospitality industry are the ones that forced on our council and pressured everybody to open sooner than we should have. So the fact that we're getting rolled back tomorrow is on whose conscience? So to come back now and complain that, you know, this isn't the right time because we're closing down again, figure out what it would have cost if we hadn't opened up and waited and done it the right way and then wouldn't have to close down again. So I'm sorry, but, you know, unfortunately, hospitality is at the root of why we are going to have to close down again because of all the extra promotion that has been done out there prematurely. And, and so it's not, it's not fair for what the council and the staff from promise residents would happen in November, which was bringing the TOT on the ballot in November because we weren't going to put it on in March, is not, it's not, they're not keeping to their word. And they went around to the whole city and to multiple neighborhoods, meetings, and sold it that way. So they owe the residents what they want. And I applaud the mayor for actually bringing up a conversation I've had multiple times when it comes to the population in the city doubles daily just because we have workers coming into the area and throw in the tourists on top of that. And yet, our police department and all our services are strained. So it's possible to get them to tip in on some of the costs. It's very important.
Thanks, Esther. Yep, and we'll go ahead and go to our next caller, and that's Carol Chorbajian. Carol, hi there.
Hi, thank you, Nat. Good evening, Mayor, Reverend Senator, and council members. My name is Carol Chorbajian. I am a Monterey resident and hospitality business owner that is approximately ninety-nine point nine percent reliant on group meetings, events, and incentives. First, I feel that when we're talking about the county of Monterey and that they are higher than the city of Monterey, you should know that the increase in their TOT from ten to ten point five percent was specifically done to support FCCV's efforts, marketing efforts, not simply to collect more general con revenue. Second, every time I just, I have to say that every time I hear Ms. Pratt speak, the number of years that it's been since the increase of the TOT has taken place increases. We're up to thirty-eight years now, and in fact, it was nineteen eighty-six. Also, as Lauren and Rick both described to you, when the city of Monterey lacked the necessary funding to renovate their aging, forty-year-old Monterey Conference Center, the local hotels, in order to be team players with the city, got together and formed the CCSC to pay for that renovation. This resulted in a four-point-one-five percent increase in the amount the guests are paying that are staying in the adjacent hotels to the conference center. And at that time, in return for that, the city council agreed not to address TOT increases until the CCFD was paid off. We are aware, absolutely aware, that a current city council may not bylaw encumber a future city council, but it was promised, and effectively, there has been a four-point-one-five percent increase in the TOT due to the CCFD. The unprecedented situation that we find ourselves in currently is causing meeting and event planners to rethink how they do their meetings, and they are very sensitive to all costs relating to executing those meetings. A two percent increase in TOT will put Monterey in a position of being higher than all of the others in our competitive set and put our future group business at great risk. I ask that you carefully consider all of the above before making a decision on the percentage of TOT. We know there needs to be an increase. But please consider carefully what that percentage will be in order to actually benefit the city of Monterey the greatest in both the short and long term. Thank you for allowing me to speak and have a great evening.
Thank you, Carol. Our next caller is, has a two-nine-nine-two at the end of their phone number.
Good evening. It's Mayor Councilor Janita Graff from the Portola Hotel and Spa. I'm beginning to think, it's not very good to go last or towards the end after listening to everybody else. And, but yeah, I do want to really talk about, first and foremost, the state of the industry and how bad it is, in particular, how bad it is for the group hotels. We are going to be the last to recover. It's been very clear to us, we're part of stage four, that until there's a vaccine, there will be no group business of significance. Our hotel alone and several others in the area have lost all of our group business through the year. We're all now kind of getting edgy about what's going to happen in the first quarter of 2021. There's also a sense of false security right now in terms of, oh, business is back and business is booming. Business is not back and business is not booming. And in particular, my hotel is still not open. You know, the hotels that are open, they're not open at a hundred percent occupancy. And we're still running very low occupancy. So while you have day-to-day travelers coming through the destination, there's a huge false sense of security. Your two percent proposed tax increase is due to it right when all the economists and the bankers are saying is when group business is going to recover, which is 2022 or 2023. So that actually is the time when we should be putting business on the books and recovering. And yet, we're going to lead fraud, you know, this is. And yet, we're, we're going to lead fraud. You know, the staff report did talk a little bit about that it's not just the COT, it's the TID, it's the CCFD, it's visit California. There's even some communities that have a room tax. Putting a 2% increase will put the Marriott, the Portola, and the Hotel Pacific higher than any other destination in the area. And there's also the comments about not raising COT for years, but yet there's no historical growth of rate. And the growth and rate in hotels also equates to the growth of rate in COT. So just because you haven't as a percentage raised COT, the benefits back to the community has been significant. So, you know, in raising COT and doing it to the, at least to 2%, you're really just slowing the recovery rates for the entire hospitality community in Monterey. And you're compounding the issue because your largest hotels that have the highest percentage to pay off that bond debt is now going to be at a disadvantage and the bond debt is going to go on for much longer than it should. So if this is a very complex conversation, this shouldn't really be geared only to COT. There are a lot of other factors that need to be considered in making these decisions. You know, yeah, somebody said, you know, we made a promise not to raise COT. I understand these are really bad economic times and, and I just, I just hope that you make the right decisions, not to dampen the recovery, and more importantly, not to dampen the recovery of the city of Monterey and also the citizens of Monterey.
Thanks Janine.
Thank you.
Our next caller is 6014.
Hi, my name is Mark Watson and I work in the hospitality industry here in the Monterey Peninsula. And first I would like to correct comments of a previous caller who suggested the hospitality industry is responsible for the rollback by the state on opening businesses. Over 80% of the cases of COVID in the county have not occurred on the peninsula. And the hospitality industry in the Monterey Peninsula has grown the COT at twice the rate of CPI over the last 30 years. Despite this, the city has increased the COT from 5% to 10% over this time period. What this means is that there has been a 400% increase in the relative tax revenue generated by the hotels compared to other revenue sources. This is a burden that the hotel industry has borne despite increased costs of operations, which has reduced profitability and challenged the peninsula's number one industry. I've heard several mention that there, that after many years, it is time to increase the COT tax rate. With that rationale, tax rates will increase without bounds into the future. Monterey should be signed for not increasing the taxes for such a long period and the city should continue to support the hospitality community in these unprecedented times. And the industry will in turn continue to generate a significant portion of the city's budget. Thank you very much.
Thanks Mark. And that's all for public comment on this item. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you Nick for always handling that so kindly and I can, I can learn from you, especially when the time's up. You handle that so graciously and courteously. Thank you so much. All right, bringing it back to the council, again, just to focus our discussion. Basically, what we need to decide is if there are four out of five people who would like to see this on our next council agenda in order to go forward with a possible hotel motel tax increase. And then I think also going forward, Mr. Rossello and Mr. Hoyer raised a point, one that I've been kind of struggling with. And that was, is, do we go with a flat 50% plus one and a charter amendment, which could be a little bit confusing? What if one passes, the other one doesn't? If a charter amendment says that the NCIP Neighborhood Improvement Program is frozen and won't get any of the increased COT, that just might kill it. And so I don't know the answer to that, but that's something we'll have to discuss at our next meeting. One, do we want to increase it? Two, should it be a special tax or should it be a dual charter amendment ballot measure? And so that was probably two things that we need to go forth with. But I think the heart of the matter is what kind of direction do we give the staff? Quite honestly, if there aren't four of us who are willing to let the voters decide this issue, we should probably let everybody know now and, and get her over with. And if there are four who say yes, we're willing to take another look at this, willing to consider it without committing yourself, I think that's the kind of direction staff needs. So with that, I'm willing to look at it. I'm thinking, well, this hurt tourism in Monterey. On a $200 room, we're looking at what? $20, $24, $4 more? On a $300 room, we're looking at $6 more? Is that going to keep a tourist or a group from coming to Monterey? I don't think so. We are low with respect to our competitors. We are low on, with respect to Monterey County. And so if we weren't, I wouldn't be open to this, but I definitely am open to this. And for me, it's the question that, and God answered so nicely, is, and Kayla said it, Fosson, Ms. Fosson said, it's a symbiotic relationship because we residents benefit from tourism, but honestly, we also bear tourism at certain times of the year, especially car wait. So the question there is, tourists should be paying their fair share. So I'm open to having this discussion at our special meeting July 29th and take a look at those options for a ballot measure. And certainly respect anyone else's agreement or a different viewpoint.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, please. Let's go have a good discussion. Go Dan.
So when you, when you mentioned that we would bring it back to 29th, would it be prudent to bring it back at our next council meeting, even though I know Ed's not going to be here? But just at least if we can't make a decision tonight, because for me, I'd like to see the staff report on whether if we phase it in, what will that look and what will the dollars look like over the, over the life of that, that phase in? And I don't know if I can see or the staff can get that information to us, you know, in one, in one council meeting. I think I take two council meetings. So I'm wondering if, if we can have this on the agenda for at least looking at some of that, those reports that the staff can give us and then on the 29th make a decision.
Sure. Well, we would ask staff if that would be, that's something that we did, I believe with Measure G and it was very helpful.
But I just wanted to bring up that a couple of council meetings ago, I mentioned about a phased in and I didn't get a lot of response from the council, so I wasn't sure how the council felt about that. Tonight, I want to hear a little bit from my council members how they feel about phased in. And because that will make a, that'll help me make a decision myself on whether, I'd like to go forward with this.
All right, we can deliver the phased in numbers tonight because the numbers are very straightforward. As Lauren pointed out, 1% is $1.4 million, so 0% is 700. So if you want to phase in the 2% in an increment of 1% and 1%, it's, it's $1.4 million, $1.4 million. So that would be a phase in that consists out of a 1% increase effective January 1st and the other 1% at a date set at the pleasure of the council. So council member Albert, we can deliver tonight already.
In all due respect, Hans, that's based on these numbers. I'd like the staff to come back to tell me what it would look like in two years on projected COT revenue in two years. Because that's just one, one aspect of the projection.
Yeah, if it's, if we are back at full strength in two years, it's about $2.8 million for 1% or 5.6 for 2%. If we are back where we are, where we were last year with the rates and the, and the occupancy in two years. So that number would be 2.8 to 5.6.
And then my last point, and then I'll let somebody else speak, is that I think I'm going to, I'm going to agree with the mayor about the two-thirds and keeping it a general tax, I mean a, a special tax instead of a general tax. I think it will be very confusing to the voters with, with multiple measures on the, on the ballot. So I, I think I'd like to see that happen.
If you give us a chance to explain that a little bit differently because the, Lauren alluded to that and I hope Chrissy can back me up on that. If you, if you create a 2% increase in COT, which will automatically increase also the NCIP rate, that has to be a special tax. So right now, the NCIP with their 16% in COT in a good year is about $4 million in, in capital spending. If you want to go forward with a COT increase that equally benefits also the COT, that has to be a special tax. If you say, we are fine where the COT is funded right now at 16% of the 10% rate.
Hans, 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 hold on a minute. This is Mayor Klein. You keep saying COT when you mean NCIP.
No, I'm, okay, let me rephrase it. If you want to, if you want to keep the COT at, if you want to keep the NCIP, thank you.
There you go.
If you want to keep the, if you want to keep the NCIP at 16% of the COT rate of 10%, you can go forward with a COT increase as a general tax. So the question that you, the council have, yes. And the question that you have as, as the council right now is, okay, do you want to discontinue the COT increase from the NCIP portion? And ensure that the 2% of the new COT fully benefits the general fund operations of the city, i.e. all the services we spoke about? Or do you want to commingle or bring the 2% back into the NCIP, which then will require a two-third vote? That's, that's an essential question you have to address. And I think that was part of your earlier question that Lauren tried to respond. And with that, I handed over to Chrissy to just tell me whether I was completely wrong or half, or half-right.
No, Hans, before we go to Chrissy, we understand that. That's, that's exactly right. And I think if, if four out of five council members are willing to look at a COT increase, then that should be on the decision tree on decision night. Should it be two-thirds or should it be 50 plus one?
Okay.
Yep, we understand that.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I ask a way, way in, I think Dan asked a legitimate question on
Sure, council member Ed, please.
On timeframe, on timeframe. And I, and I want to discuss the workload and how we use these next coming dates to decide this, to get it on the ballot. Dan, to answer your question, yes, I think it needs to be on the ballot. I want to see how, how we use the workdays to finalize what we're putting into the language. Because as we grappled with prior on Measure P and then Measure G, 75 words goes by very quickly. And as we're talking about all these nuances now, I believe it's going to be very difficult to explain that in 75 words. So as we move forward to the next council meeting, I unfortunately won't be able to be here, but the 29th I will. And what are we doing on the 29th? And what's the last meeting that we finalized the vote and approve of the language? So this has to go to the county by when? And are we able to use our first meeting in August to finalize the language? So am I right on the dates that the first meeting in August, we will be finalizing the language? Can somebody answer that?
Yes, you, you, there is no, we, we need a staff, a couple of days to write the ballot language, get it all approved. It's, it's not just the voting night and then the next morning we submit. So it would put us a little bit, council member Smith, into a real time bind to, to do that in the first meeting in August. And that's why we suggest that since July 21st, this is a meeting without your presence, that we have an extra meeting on July 29th. That gives us the time to, 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 in case you put it on the ballot, to, to figure out all the mechanics to, to put it forward. There's a great deal of legal work to be done by, by the attorney to, there has to be a ballot argument be written, et cetera, et cetera. So there are still things that we have to do. As, as much as I like to really work with, with no parachute then, that's what we actually will do. And I think frankly, that, that will put a lot of stress on, on, on all of us to, to submit it on time.
Okay, so that, that helps me clarify in my mind that the 29th is the night that we are voting on the, the final language to allow you to have the remaining days to, to push that forward and have a clean bill, if you will, that goes to the county. So I want to just, I want to briefly state a couple of things, then I'll get out of the way and I want to hear my other council members as well. I believe that anytime we have a tax of any kind in our society, that the higher threshold is more wise. And I'm in favor of a two-thirds vote. We did that for Measure G, for Measure S, for Measure P, and for countywide X. I think it's important and I don't think it puts us at risk of this passing, but I think in all fairness, it should be two-thirds because it's a tax, tax measure. And I don't want to play the games with, you know, splitting it and, and some of it's going to go back to the general fund and some doesn't go to the NCIP. I'm in favor of the entire 16% stays with the same format that continues to go to NCIP. I think it's cleaner language. For me, the decision point is only in how to phase it in. I think 2% is the right number based on the com stat, but not all at once. I think it should be phased in and I'm open to hear from others, but I think two-thirds, yes, put it on the ballot, make it as clean as possible. All 16% of the COT goes to NCIP. And what I'd like to talk about is what's the appropriate phased-in approach to make sure that we have an opportunity for recovery time for hospitality and, and the competition of marketing. So with that, I'd like to hear everybody else's comment.
Thank you Ed, I appreciate that. Lauren or somebody, while we hear from other council members, could you calculate what, if, if we went two-thirds and 16% stayed with NCIP, what that dollar would be based on 2.8 million and 5.6 million? Please, you understand my question?
Yeah, so 16% of 2.8 and 5.6, right Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that.
I did it. Now I'll see if I got it right.
It's an additional $202,400 for the NCIP. Correct. The, the
Very good.
The, the question that the council also has to, to, to consider when, when, and give us directions maybe in two weeks or maybe even tonight, do you want to get the increase going forward to include then the 16% of NCIP? So basically bump up the, the NCIP portion of the revenues in combination with the new COT? Or do you want to exclude that and say that we leave the NCIP at 16% of the 10%? That you can also do with a two-third vote if you want to go down that road.
Yeah, understood. Yeah.
So my answer is I want to keep it all the same.
Okay. Let's hear from Alan and Tyler, please. You've been very patient. Council member Alan, what are you thinking?
So I was on the council when we voted to apply the CCFD. That's the tax that pays for the conference center. And it is true that we indicated we would not address COT because especially for the three hotels around the conference center, it's pretty significant. 4.15%, 1.6 for the other big hotels and 0.8 for ever, all of the other hotels. So that's on top of the 10%. So this is something I have, partly because of that, I've resisted. I was very proud that So this is something I have, partly because of that, I've resisted. I was very proud that we, the residents, did not have to pay for the conference center renovation. It was completely borne by the hospitality. But I recognize that that does affect competitiveness, that if you raise, there is a point. I do agree, people will continue to come to Monterey, but there becomes, there's a sweet spot where you don't want to go above a certain point. And then you see occupancy go down and your tax is higher, but how much additional revenue are you actually getting? So nobody knows what that sweet spot is. Like, we don't know. But I but I but that's something that concerns me a little bit. On the other hand, we're in an unprecedented financial crisis. And I think because of that, we've done a lot of things we never even would have thought of. We never would have thought we would suspend NCIP. We never thought we would suspend CIP. I would never have voted to take, you know, one-time money from transport or from a vehicle renewal to use for general fund expenditures. But this is unprecedented, and so as a result, I I agree, I think we have to raise the TOT. The question is, how do we do it? Do we do it, as Dan said, in a tiered way? How much do we do it? Do we include the NCIP or do we not include NCIP? I'm hearing, I think, three council members signal pretty strongly. They really don't want to deal with a separate measure carving out NCIP and making this separate. And and I think it's important if we can, for me, I would like to see us have five votes if possible when we put this on the ballot. So I want to work with all of you to achieve that if we can. So I'm okay with that. Dan's mentioned tiering. And like, it makes total sense to me on one level, which is you're trying to phase in the impact so that in this year in particular, when competitive pressures are something conference planners might be looking at most carefully, you don't want to make it a bigger factor. On the other hand, this is the year we need the money, you know, so it's like, ah. I I would be open to a conversation about that. I don't, and maybe afterward, after Tyler speaks, maybe we can go back around and talk about like, what would that look like? I think the mayor brought up a really good point, and I just wanted to hit on that again, which is that we do make a lot of money from our hotels, and it allows us residents to enjoy a lot of things that we're losing right now because they're paid for by those taxes. But it does provide benefit to the tourists. We spend a lot more on police than comparable-sized cities. Why is that? It's because we have lots of special events that require additional public safety and overtime in many cases because they're special events. And so public safety, parks, the rec trail, El Estero Park, Window on the Bay, those are all things that benefit tourists as well. So I do think it's reasonable to ask tourists to pay more. It's just a question of doing it in in the way that makes the most sense. I think almost every year I've been on council, without raising TOT, we've seen more TOT revenue. I think the one year was maybe 14, 2014 to 2015. I think it was more or less flat. But almost every year, we've seen maybe 2% to 6% increase in TOT. So as hospitality has grown, the city has grown and it's benefited all of us. And it's just, we've got to figure out how to keep that symbiosis going. And it's a delicate balance between, you know, finding the proper tax rate and you know, not not going beyond the price point that it starts to hurt us. And one last thing, whatever we do, we got to make sure we include the online, you know, the online operators. I I don't know, it wasn't clear to me if that can be included in a in the same ballot measure or not, but we got to include that.
Yeah, I think the consensus there. Tyler, thank you for waiting. We're anxious to hear what you're thinking.
Absolutely. I just have a question first. I just want to know from from staff if what our certainty level is regarding whether or not we would have a negative impact to the conference center bookings due to an increase. And I I have an assumption in my mind about that, but I just I posed that question to staff.
I'm happy to confirm or reject your assumption, Tyler.
Oh, he's not. He's not showing his cards. He wants to know what your assumption is first. Is that what I'm hearing? Very good.
My friends in the hospitality industry will of course say, what what does the city manager know about the hospitality industry when they are trying to make group sales in the Marriott Hotel, Potola Hotel, and our conference center? The matter of fact is, though, that group sales in both hotels are not just contingent on the TOT rate. What you're booking for the conference center is a complex package that includes the wine and dine portion, that includes food and beverage, that includes the room rates and other services that the hotels provide. So it is up to the hotels to to work with with the different meeting planners to say whether they charge $300 for five gallons of Starbucks or $150 for five gallons of Starbucks coffee or any other coffee like Pete's Coffee. So so the point that I'm trying to make is it's a complex negotiation and and you have general managers in the city not affiliated with the conference center hotels who basically say, you know, Hans, it's a matter of the negotiating of the package. The TOT itself is not a deciding factor for meeting planners, whether they come to the city of Monterey or not. It's the whole package and the service levels that the conference center hotels and the conference center are delivering to the meeting. And I hope that is your assumption as well, Councilmember Williams.
Very good. I appreciate you confirming that for me, sir. So, you know, to to kind of loop my comments up with that point, and then I'll get on to a few others. You know, I think that there is an opportunity for us to look at the MCCVB funding, and I know that it was being proposed by staff for us to consider a potential decrease to the allocation of that. When, and I spoke to this when we were talking about the budget at the last council meeting, which is normally what you see in organizations is an allocation for marketing for anywhere between 8% to 10%. We're doing 6% with the county and every other municipality in the county or that's participating is doing 3%. So I think there's a real opportunity for us to work with our business partners to help create or remove any of that fear around any potential loss by, I would say, at the very least, maintaining the 6%, but maybe even look at increasing it slightly to be supportive of a broader supporting a a marketing fund that that will attract a broader audience of folks that we wouldn't have attracted before that could help make up for that potential loss, if that makes sense. So that's just one thing I wanted to put on the table. In regards to the to the NCIP, I think I might be at a difference of opinion from the rest of the council. But let me just try to make this argument here and and see if we can have further dialogue about it. Because I think we owe it to the residents to allow them to decide if the additional funding should go to the general fund or if they think it should be allocated to a a group of appointed community members wholly or or at least mostly made up of of homeowners. And so, you know, we're seeing this this group of folks who are have all the best intentions to do good in our community. But I just wonder, do they need more funding? And then what I would also add to that, that before the shelter in place happened, we saw projects in the queue that have been sitting there for five years. So the problem with them isn't funding, except now it is in the sense of the fact that we pulled the funding away, but they're going to start receiving funding again at a certain point. And so now we're going to put more funding in there for them to allocate more, you know, to allocate more funding for projects that are going to be further delayed. I just wonder, why are we making that decision for our residents? Why don't we choose that for them? It's being phrased as it being more complicated. But I think that it's it's prudent for us to give our residents that choice. I'd also say that it's important that we look at other priorities as well. So we've discussed fiscal stability within the city being the number one priority. Well, we're not going to be being able to maintain fiscal stability if we're throwing more money at a program that doesn't necessarily need it. We've identified housing as a priority of the city. And so how are we going to do better towards providing funding for housing that's desperately needed for the most vulnerable people in our community, including homeless? What about, we use some of that funding, I was doing some calculations and I my numbers could be a little bit off here, so staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we did 16% on the additional 2.8 million, that comes out to be somewhere around 500K. No, that's a little bit wrong. It's several hundred thousand.
48,000. It's 448,000.
So yeah, 500K. So let's say we take some of that funding and we create one new position in the city, which, something that I've been really trying to make sure that we focused on as a priority for the city, particularly through this COVID-19 experience, is is that we are focusing on community engagement and that and that we're creating that experience where we're expanding the net of folks involved in the community as opposed to focusing on focusing on those few folks that are already involved and that are going to be engaged whether or not NCIP is there. Why aren't we doing a better job of reaching out to those college-age students, to those high school students that are going to be coming dolce soon, to those renters that make up 70% of our community? Why don't we create a new position within the city that gives a person the focused responsibility of community engagement and outreach? Why don't we set that as a framework for the priorities within the city? I think there's tons of things that we could be doing, never mind outside of trying to survive this fiscal crisis that we're in on top of, well, so we have the COVID-19 experience, but then we were talking about how we were in a fiscal crisis when we raised the sales tax. Right? So we have a lot of things to deal with. And if you guys are okay with just giving 500,000 extra dollars to NCIP, I I don't think you're representing the constituents appropriately or fairly. Let them decide. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't give the money to NCIP. I'm saying let the residents decide. And then I'll just kind of end with the point around the sunrise idea. I mean, I'm open to that, too. I I'm I'm open to having that dialogue, but I also agree with Alan around the idea that, you know, the funding is needed now. And so definitely any idea of sunsetting it doesn't make any sense because their problem is now, too. So I don't really know how to go there, but I really hope that we can engage in a in a conversation here to reconsider this idea of NCIP because that is, I think, something that's going to be really important to making a difference in the in the funding allocation.
If I may, Tyler, I I'm not disagreeing with you, but here's my fear. And that is we have two or three ballot measures. They're all charter amendments. And somebody has to write the ballot measures. Somebody has to do a campaign to explain what all this is. And we have a couple of people who are going to run a campaign against that. I would hate to see the measure fail because it's too complicated and and to the voter. And again, as it was explained earlier, and I'm sorry for repeating myself, if I read this measure will not further fund the NCIP, I might think, what? I can't vote for that without understanding that it keeps present current funding for NCIP if we went that route. So that's that's my fear. And what you're talking about, what we do with the money, I like it. That's a discussion after we get the money. I hope. But that's that's why I'm a little I just want to keep it as simple as possible to increase the chances of it being passed, so. I just share that with you as a as a perspective of why I'm leaning that way, but I could go either way, honestly, but I kind of struggled with this for a long time.
Yeah, so I I hear what you're saying. But I highly doubt that the residents of the city of Monterey are going to vote against the increase. They might vote against not changing the charter amendment for allowing the funds to go to NCIP or not. They might vote against that. But the language is very specific and clear, and I don't think that there's much work that needs to be done on it from staff's side in order to put the legwork into this. So I I think that there's two different things and, you know, if I think without certainty, I think that the increase to the to the TOT is going to happen if we put it on the ballot. The second one, I say, let's let the community decide. And I mean, who's good, who will really have a competitive campaign against an increase in TOT? When we know that the the community generally favors it?
Okay, that's good. Now, that's a great, good point. Let that, I'm going to ask Chrissy or staff. What happens if, okay, it's put on the ballot, what happens if a TOT increase is approved? But a charter amendment is not approved, exempting NCIP from the increase? See what I mean? So.
I do. We've we've looked at this very carefully and we've studied the legislative history of the charter amendment back in the early 80s. And in our view, from what we can tell from the legislative record, is that the NCIP program was adopted 10 years after the passage of Proposition 13. And Prop 13 is a measure that requires taxes for designated special purpose to be approved by two-thirds of the voters. And so the adoption of the charter at that time in 1988 did not surrender the power of the voters to increase a general tax by majority vote. There's no indication of that intention in the ballot materials that any future increase in the TOT would be a special tax subject to Prop 13's two-thirds voter requirement. Or that any future increases to the TOT could not be adopted without allocating the 16% to the NCIP. So stated another way, the default for a TOT measure is a general tax and we can draft it as a general tax increase. And then the charter amendment is just to have a declaration of existing law saying that exactly what I just recited, so if the ballot measure passed and it didn't specify that it was a special tax, I think it would probably hold up in court on a legal challenge should the charter not pass. That would be.
I'm still confused. If the NCIP, if NCIP is included in the ballot measure, is funded at 1/6 or 16% if it's included in the language that the new income, the new TOT would also include the NCIP, then it's a special tax. It takes two-thirds vote.
Correct.
Let me address it this way, maybe. If it's the, let's first figure out what the intention of the city council is. If the city council wants the NCIP to get 16% of any increase, so if it's a 2% increase, if you want them to continue to get 16% of that new amount, that will be specifically spelled out in the ballot measure and in the question that this is a special tax, 16% will go to the NCIP. That would need to be addressed.
That's a two-thirds vote there.
Correct. And if you want it to carry on, it will need to specify that. And it will make it very clear that it's a special tax and that allocation requirement would stay.
Right.
If it's not the intention of the city council to have any new increase allocated to the NCIP. If it's not the intention of the city council to have any new increase allocated to the NCIP, it's just a simple ballot measure question with the 2% increase and also referencing the changes to include the online travel companies. General tax, it would pass. We're suggesting a charter amendment for the simple point of declaring existing law. So it's not really, it's not saying anything crazy like no new amounts or anything. It just says, existing law is that any new tax increase after 1988 is not allocated to this program. Uh, but that, you know, existing percentage stays put. And that would be.
Do you need that in the charter amendment or not? I mean, do we need that on the ballot if we decide to go 50% plus one, no extra NCIP money?
It's our recommendation that it be on.
Okay, is it required legally to be on there?
I, I don't want to get into too much, you know, if there's potential for legal challenges and such, I don't want to go into too much detail publicly.
Let's discuss that at the next time this comes back because I think, I, I'm still confused, honestly. And this is, it's, let's talk about that between, at our next council meeting so we can decide.
Could, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Sure, Tyler, do you, do you understand it better than me? Help.
Um, I'm going to ask a question in a different way. So let's say we put the measure on to, uh, what was the link? Declare the existing law? And that gets voted down. But then we also have the other measure which identifies the increase and the update to the charter regarding third party. That gets approved, but the first one doesn't get approved. What happens in that scenario?
Since we're taking the position that it's simply a declaration of existing law, the city's position would be that the tax would be implemented as a general tax and not allocated to the NCIP.
Okay, so.
But I think, I think you misunderstood Chrissy. He said one passed and one didn't pass.
I do understand. And so the charter, if the charter measure should fail and the charter measure is, in our view, just a declaration of existing law, and the tax increase passed, it just falls under existing law. And it would proceed as a general tax, not applicable to the NCIP, not allocated to NCIP. It, it would need to, the ballot measure would need to specify that the new tax is allocated to the NCIP for it to be that way.
So, so I just point out to my colleagues, all the more reason for us to do the two ballot measures. I, I, it, it makes sense to me now. If we do it where we are.
That's fun of us.
If we do it where we want the 16% of TOT from the 2% increase, let's say we do 2%. If we want that to still go to NCIP, we have to put that in the ballot measure and it requires a two-thirds vote.
Correct.
If we just want to do a majority vote, 50% plus one, then we put the ballot measure on and separately, we have this, this claim that, this, uh, what was it Chrissy, the language? Declaration of existing law. That's a separate ballot measure and it doesn't affect the first at all. So we can still get the increase and actually it's at a lower threshold. So we're even more certain that we're going to get the increase there than we, than we would be. Does that make sense?
Sounds really good.
Chrissy, I got it. So, so can I, can I highlight?
Makes sense Tyler, it's a matter of whether we agree with it or not, that's the rule. I'm glad you understand it. Ed Smith, please.
Yes, so the conversation we've had the last 15 minutes has all been great. But I want to remind everybody, we get 75 words to explain what we're asking the voters to do. And I think the voters deserve to have clarity. And for me, it's two, it's two issues clearly in a vote. Fix the third-party travel agent and collect all of the tax that's owed to us. Automatically, let's get that in the language. And then the other one is, as I stated before, I don't want to pull any punches to our residents and split the dollars over that 2% difference that they're going to make a big deal. When I say they, all those that believe in, in what NCIP has done and originally started out to be, that's 16% from every TOT dollar. I believe that if it's not the same way going forward, we will have opposition. And if we don't have a two-thirds vote threshold for taxes, we will definitely have opposition. And we've already heard a speaker say that tonight. And I believe the Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association would probably come forward with action to fight that we're not doing this as a two-thirds. And I think what we're after is a community agreement to move forward with a clean, if you call this a clean bill of legislation, that is understandable, that is highly supported. There's going to always be some that won't agree that an additional 2% TOT put on their hotels is, is fair. But I think that will be more of a minority versus the number of voters who are in love with the NCIP and look forward to the day in the future where it's fully funded and we get back to doing important programs and projects in the city of Monterey. So I don't want to deprive them of that increase of the 2%. I think they, they deserve it in the original statement of purpose when we started. NCIP, I think they should get the whole 16%.
If, if I could, I, so I think that, kind of repeating a point, but I think that there is actually a smaller majority of the community that's engaged with the NCIP. And as we're expanding our, potentially expanding our budget here by increasing our revenues, I think that the community members want to be more engaged with what the city council is doing. And so if we're giving this funding to another smaller entity that most people in the community actually aren't paying attention to, there's less of a watch on what's going on and less control over what we're doing with that increase of revenue, we're allocating it to another group. Another thing that I would point out, and I've communicated this before, is we really need to answer the question, how are we paying for the maintenance costs associated with the projects that come through NCIP? That falls onto our general fund budget, that doesn't come out of the NCIP budget. So we're putting, we're putting further and further pressure on our budget that we control. We're the electeds, the community elects us. And we have less control over that because we're allowing some other group to create these projects that require maintenance over time. And as those projects continue to grow and grow in the community, we're going to be responsible for that. And that's why we're continuing to see the problems that we're in.
Mayor, if I could mention something?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I, I do want to mention about the NCIP being a, a true representative of our neighborhoods. Yes, it may mean that there's 30, 35 people that are making decisions on funding, but they are going back and engaging in our neighborhoods. And I think that's very, very important at the helm of the city of Monterey, that we do engage. And we do get those people to, to go talk to their neighbors about projects. And I think that's a very important part of the NCIP, not even, to me, maybe even more important than the projects themselves. They, they are doing a grassroots effort to get out there and talk to the neighbors. That's number one. And number two, Tyler, I wasn't quite sure, when you say sunrise, are you talking about the phase in? Sunrise, because, because I did mention sunset about an hour ago. And the reason I brought it in, in the sunset is because in any tax, any, any sales tax, you allow something to get accomplished and then it drops off, as you already know. And that's what I was talking about, was to increase the TOT, allow the hospitality industry to get back on their feet. And once they're back on the feet, then look, look at the effects of the, of this increase in TOT. And if it, if there's a negative increase, and negative increase, then maybe that there should be a sunset involved in it. But that was just a thought that came out of my head, doesn't mean anything.
Can I jump in here? Um, Dan, I'd like to hear more. The sunset, I, I'll just say, I don't think is a good idea for this because we're talking about spending it on general fund expenditures and employees and ongoing expenses. Whereas like for the sales tax, those are on, on the roads, the sidewalks and sort of one-time expenses, so. And, and then the public can kind of judge, are we spending the money well? Are we actually fixing the roads? And do we want to continue to do it? And we can go back to them and ask them, you know, in 10 years if they want to or not. But I feel like for what we're talking about spending this on, I don't think that it necessarily makes sense to have a sunset. But I would like to hear more, what are you imagining in terms of kind of tiering?
Oh, well, like I said, we, we rely so heavily on the hospitality industry. I'm afraid that, and, and I'm hearing from hospitality industry that if we do put an increase in, on TOT, that there might be some failed businesses over the next two or three years, there might be a, a extra burden on them. And I'm afraid that i- if there is this, if they, if, if the hospitality industry doesn't recover in the next three years, we may not have the TOT increase anyway. And on top of that, we may not even have TOT in general. Because I, I know that's extreme, I get it.
So Dan, are you thinking like a 1% or a 1%? Or what were you thinking?
Well, before I, before I kind of give that idea, I think maybe, Mayor, if I could just suggest that we all as a council decide on what that maximum TOT increase should be. And then I can go from there. So if we all agree that it should be 2% or 1%, then maybe I can discuss, or we can discuss a phase in. But for right now, we don't even know what the maximum is going to be. So what do you, what do you folks think? Should it be 1% or 1%?
Councilmember, Dan, as we could share an opinion right now, we really can't take a formal action because that's not agendized that way. But if you just want to.
I'm not asking for a vote, I'm not asking that.
Personally, uh, 2% makes sense to me. I, I think Hans is trying to get some information here to bring some clarity.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, just offer a few thoughts for council's consideration as well. So number one, I think the notion that the 1% or 2% question or 3% question kills the hospitality industry, yes or no, is, is probably an appropriate consideration. But when you look behind the scenes of what the hotels are charging as a property fee, resort fee, wifi fee, parking fee, roll, roller bed fees, et cetera. Resort fees that equivalent to 13% of the average daily rate is, is in one hotel here. 12% of that average rate as a property fee. You, you, you see that there are margins that hotels can operate. So it's just something to consider that if you see those, those cost recovery fees that, that considerably contribute to the profit of the hotels are contributing to, to what is then the 1% or 2% contributing? That's one thought I just wanted to offer when, when we are talking about phasing in or when we're talking about 1% or 2%. If really the, the, the economics are so bad right now, hotels today would not charge property fees or resort fees as they do. The second thought that I wanted to share with you is also the following. What do you plan as the council to do with that money? To, how do you want to spend that additional funding? That's a very important question. And if, if you ask me, of course, I have a suggestion for you. A chunk of that money needs to go into the conference center. We need to capitalize into the, into the conference center. And that cannot be a token amount. That needs to be something like 750,000 to maybe even a million dollars annually that we have to stash away for the facility reserve. The hotels are paying for the conference center. It's our obligation to be fiscally liquid enough in 10 years or 15 years to restore and bring the building up. So the point that I'm trying to make here is, if you look at the programs as they are funded right now through the charter, using the TOT, for instance, to the NCIP. I would like you to, to, to consider, is it, is the NCIP sufficiently funded as of today? And I submit for your consideration that the city's general fund, CIP, for decades has been 1.4 million dollars to 1.5. Whereas the NCIP increases went to the TOT, went from 2, 3 to 3 and a half to 3.9 million dollars. Whereas we were stagnant in our own CIP. Now, granted, the NCIP did a lot of very good community-wide projects. And they, they deserve a lot of recognition for that. And I, I, I can just underline what has been said about the NCIP and the value for the city. But what I'm asking is just also, look at what do you plan in doing with that money? And part of the funds that I said I would suggest, put it into the, into the facility reserve for the conference center. And then look, where do we have capital improvement needs? And where do we have other funding for other capital improvement already allocated, i.e. to the NCIP? So again, this is not a advocacy against the, the NCIP. It's just asking you to, to look, where do you want to spend the funds when they come, hopefully to the city one day?
May I suggest that we, we've probably gone around in circles and I, I, I do see people wanting to speak. But I, I think I'm, I'm going to suggest that we probably need a decision tree at our next meeting. I hear people are, unless I'm wrong, I hear people are supportive of a TOT increase. I haven't heard anything differently. And it seems like 2% is a figure that is going around. And that then, then a third thing that we would have to make a decision on, on our decision tree would be, do we phase it in? 1%, 2%? If that's a phase, and when would we do that? Then the, the big question is, is it a general tax, is NCIP included in it or not? Those seem to be the four issues, the first two. If we can get the staff that direction, then we can further debate the merits of the NCIP. As the founder of NCIP, I can tell you, when I put that on the ballot measure in 1987, we just, it was 8%, we added 2%. That 2%, well, it wasn't actually a 2%, a 2% increment, was to go to the NCIP, NCIP to pay for it. Because we didn't have the money to take it out of the general fund. The fact that it was 16% is coincidental. At that time, I did not suggest, nor did the council at that time say, it should be 1/6. We just popped 2% on top of it. And that created the 16%. That's where it came from. So that, that's, that, that's the four issues that I see we probably would need to make a decision on at our next meeting. So I'm sorry, Dan, for interrupting, please go.
So Mayor, if I can just answer Alan's question on what I thought that that phase in looked like. To me, when, what I hear from the hospitality industry is that the 2022 is probably the year that they'll start recovering and, and coming back from this, which is about two years. Well, I would look at a, a five, a, a half a percent increase in 2020, a half a percent increase in July 21, that's next July, a year from now. And then a 1% January 2022. So that's like a year and a half of getting to 2%. That's what I was looking at, Alan.
Then we should put that on our decision tree when we actually make the decisions to see how, what the council thinks of that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I give some feedback to the concept?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree with the phased-in approach, or we can call it a, you know, a dawn approach, a sunrise approach, whatever you want to have. But a phased-in approach, I think, in all fairness, from what I'm hearing is that the hospitality is going to need some time for recover. And we understand that we have two pieces of this hospitality. We have conventioner, convention, um, group business, and we have leisure travel. So right now, what we're seeing is 45 to 50% leisure travel. Although that's going to change here because now we've lost, you know, 23 counties are in, again, shutdown mode, including Monterey County. So I think the entire industry needs the time to recover. I was thinking, the, the November vote gives us the January start of a half a percent increase. And then the following year, January 22 is another half a percent. And then the follow-on year is a 1%. But I think we should talk about this in greater detail and what it means. But I think we should talk about this in greater detail and what it means. But I think 2% for me is the comfortable level because it puts us even with, bear with me, Napa, Laguna Beach, Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara County, Sonoma, Sonoma City, St. Helena, South Lake Tahoe. They're all at 12%. We're at 10. That gets us kind of in the comstat piece. I'm sympathetic to the, the C C F D. But in all things considered, I think a phased-in approach is the answer to the impact that hospitality is telling us. We waited a long time. I was one that said not, not last year because we were doing Measure G. And I didn't want to confuse the voter and have too many things in front of the voter all at the same time. I had in my mind probably next year would be the time to do it. The environment of our economic need has moved that up a little bit, probably a year in advance. I was going to ultimately get to, to a 2% increase next year. We're doing it a little bit early, but I think it's fair to do it now. But a phased-in approach is what I would advocate to talk more details about next time.
Okay, good. I, I look forward to that. I'm not sure I'm sold on the phased in yet, but I'm willing to discuss it with you next time.
Can I add one, one, one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Alan.
So I'm, I'm open to discussing the phased-in approach. I mean, it's cost benefit. We need the money now, so phasing it in, we kind of lose that benefit a little bit. But on the other hand, this is a difficult time. And I can see the benefit of phasing in. So I don't know. I'm open to having that conversation. As far as what the city manager brought up, I think as a separate thing, if this goes on the ballot and if it passes, I think we could separately take up a discussion of an ordinance or, or a policy that sets aside a certain percentage of this, not only for the conference center, but for capital improvement in general, maybe. I don't know. Because I, I am sensitive to what the city manager said, which is that our C I P budget has been stagnant for a long time. We know that we have a lot of deferred maintenance. And I think we, if this passes, we need to, it maybe wouldn't be the first year or two because I think the first year or two, we're about trying to bring back our, our programs and make our city whole. But I think in the future, we need to have a policy that says a certain percentage of this money is going to go into capital improvements, including the conference center, but also including the police department, the fire department, the library, et cetera. That's just how I feel. I don't think we've done a good job of long-term planning for those, those kind of capital needs. And so, but I think that would be a separate thing we would do. That's just my thought.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. We've been talking about this for far too long where we, our capitalization expenses. Exactly.
Yeah. Alan, I would, I would just want to confirm what he said because when we, we saw the passage of the bond measure, the C C F D, and hospitality stepped up and, and put a deed restriction on their property to see the construction of the beautiful conference center, what it said to me was, we should never, ever be in a position again to have to have someone else pay for our city building. And I think the way we do that is we designate the percentage of the C I P. So we plan ahead for the future for in 20 years, 25 years, when we're talking about major renovation again, we do have the assets for ourselves. Because that may have been a once-in-a-lifetime bond measure supported by hospitality. The next time, it may be all on us.
Yeah, that's a good point. I would point out that a lot of times, N C I P and Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program, in essence, became part of our, our C I P.
Yeah.
Because if you look at the E O C, the Emergency Operations Center, that was funded by the N C I P. Would it have been built without N C I P? That's debatable. The basketball courts on, down, down on the waterfront, N C I P projects, traffic calming sidewalks, greenbelt maintenance.
Solicitor ballpark.
Well, yeah, if you take a look at it, you'll probably find that a lot of the N C I P projects were C I P projects. And, but so as I'm, I don't know if our staff would like a motion or do you have enough direction? I'm thinking, you know what I'm thinking? If, if a motion, if I could capture a motion, and that is to bring this back at our special meeting on July 29, is it? And at that point, we would have a decision tree. And that is, that decision tree would indicate a 2% increase, number one. Number two would be, should it be phased in? Or not? And what would that look like? Then the third thing would be, should it be a two-thirds vote, including the N C I P as a special tax, or should it be a 50% vote? And what that would look like, because I'm still unclear about that. And then I don't know if we still want to discuss a sunset or not, but those would be my three things that I think we would need to discuss.
Mayor, I'll second that. But if, if I could, could we add an element to that where we are-
Hold on, you're muted and Tyler's talking.
Where, where we indicate what that amount would be that would go to N C I P?
Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, we, we have an informational report only. So there, I believe, I, if, if I may reiterate what I understand from the council, what you want to bring us back, that, that might be in the, in the spirit of the Brown Act and the presentation as an informational item and, and having you discuss it. So if that is okay with you.
Hans, if I can just interrupt for one second. The mayor mentioned about a sunset. Alan makes a lot of sense about making sure that dollars are not going to ongoing expenses. That, that makes sense to me. So I, I'm not looking at a sunset at all.
All right, but I'm, I'm more than happy to, to make this consensus. But I, I've learned the hard way that sometimes consensus has a way of being misinterpreted or unraveling. That's why I thought a, a motion would be a, a little more clear. So if the motion could be to ask staff to, let me use this, to potentially place a ballot measure on in November to include those decision tree elements. Does that sound better? No? Chrissy?
Motion.
Yes, and our lawyer, what do you think?
I, I think we have enough information to bring back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if, if you allow me, I, I, I think the council is, in general terms, has, has, is advising us to come back with a 2% proposal for T O T. The council has, would like to see a decision tree that proposes that also as a phased-in approach. And councilmember Albert proposed a certain phase in that we took copious notes. We as staff may, may come up with also an alternative model to that. But I think the council also very clearly indicated that all of you are recognizing the hospitality challenges, that all of you are also recognizing that it will take some time for the hospitality to get back on their feet. So a phased-in approach makes sense. We also, I think, have a understanding that the, the person who brought up the sunset was convinced by, by another council member that it was not a good idea and that was retracted. So as such, we are ignoring a sunset. And you really are wrestling with the question that we will bring back to you. Maybe it's not so much wrestling as you may then, then see it clearly, but whether it should be a two-thirds, including N C I P, or whether it should be a simple majority excluding the increase to N C I P. We can build that decision tree up as well. And all of you have indicated very clearly that you like the charter amendment that deals with the operators and the third-party travel organizations as well. So, so with that, I think, I, 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 I don't, I, I have not overlooked anything important that, that was near and dear to the majority of, of, of the council right now. And I think the, the question that I want to ask you also is I heard from some council members that they like to discuss it on July 21, even without councilmember Smith not being present. And councilmember Smith kind of indicated that's fine with him as long as he sees the results and we can then vote on July 29. So I saw this actually as a, as a two-step tango going forward that, that we do on July 21, the, the next discussion with more concrete steps. And then you, you have a chance to fine-tune everything for a potential vote on July 29.
Okay, that, that sounds good. The, the, our city manager summarized our consensus well. Tyler, please?
Yeah, I'm just hoping that, can we include the amount that would go to N C I P or not in that, in that presentation as well, please?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good.
So, so I, I want to clarify what, Tyler, you're asking for it to be included as, as information so that you know how much dollars we're talking about is the decision point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I have a question for Chrissy, the city manager. Just so when I walk away and tomorrow we're thinking about this, is this one vote item? Or do we feel that we have to have a second ballot measure to take on the, the operator piece? Or is it one ballot measure?
It's one ballot measure.
Okay. I think that's a, a good thing for the public. And 75 words gets gobbled up very quickly. And we'll stay tuned and I'll, I'm going to try and change my plans to participate on the evening of 21st. I may be in some Northern California hotel paying probably 7% T O T. But I'm going to, I'm going to try and dial in if I can.
We want to report on that, Ed.
Yeah.
We will, we will use a lot of abbreviations from the Urban Dictionary to get everything into 75 words.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be a challenge. I, I want to say one other, one other thing in the process. Dan's been smiling for 10 minutes. So I, I feel like he had something else he wanted to say. Dan? No? Okay. I, I just want to say that, you know, these are, these are tough equations. And I'm terrible at math, but this is a math equation trying to fit in a tough balancing act in the budget going forward, not just this year, but as we go through the recovery. And we, we appreciate all of the people that call and email us and then especially those that call in and give us their thoughts. And making public policy this way is probably the epitome of America that I so much enjoy. And we'll land on the right answer and we'll, we'll give it to the voters in November and, and they'll tell us what the outcome's going to be. But I appreciate everybody's patience and all the calls we got, all of us got today and all the emails we all got that are giving us their ideas. And so many people are so focused, laser-focused on the benefits to the community of Monterey. And that, I think, is the greatest thing to get to see in a process like this. So much appreciate everybody.
Very nicely said. We have two more agenda items. We've also been going at it for two hours and 40 minutes. Let's reconvene here at 9:45, gives us about an eight-minute break. So we'll see everybody at 9:45. And Ed stated it so well. Thank you, Ed, with your concluding remarks on that item. Okay, we'll see you all soon. Thank you, Ed, with your concluding remarks on that item. Okay, we'll see you all soon. After what I thought was really another excellent discussion by the city council, very thoughtful and I love the give and take and as I said, I always learn from you. So we have an urgency ordinance with respect to actually what happened already. Our city manager exercising his powers. So I will turn it over to our city manager who can explain the next two items are about COVID and things that we as a city are trying to do. I know we were receiving emails about people concerned and wanted to reassure them that we're taking all the measures that we possibly can. So our commendable city manager, please, Hans, introduce our next item.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I will cover the last two items of tonight's agenda personally. So the first one in front of you is that we are asking you to adopt an urgency ordinance, in essence ratifying the actions that I took as your Director of Emergency Services with respect to enacting and ordering the use of face coverings in the city of Monterey and to be enforceable through an administrative citation. The charter requires that you ratify that or you enact an urgency ordinance with a forfeit vote that will become immediately effective. We did this on June 30th that we enacted this order that basically was based on the high number of complaints that we kept receiving from residents that expressed concerns about folks walking in the city without wearing the face coverings that were required by different agencies and recommended by the state and by the county. And so we heard about the concerns that were there. We also talked to the council not too long ago about the enforcement actions particularly by law enforcement. And we also are very much aware about choke points that we have on WAF Number One as well as on Canary Row where we simply cannot maintain social distancing of six feet. So the order was basically put into action on June 30th that will basically require people to wear face coverings on WAF One and also on Canary Row from Hoffman to David Avenue. And we basically put the presumption out that you cannot have social distancing in those areas with that we are requiring to wear masks and the usual exemptions that could have applied in other areas, i.e. somebody is jogging, walking or hiking, are not applicable to those two areas. We basically also instituted that as mandatory. Of course, exceptions remain, those folks that have respiratory diseases or other reasons, illnesses that prevent them from wearing a face covering. We also changed it to an administrative citation from a criminal infraction that was punishable by $1,000. We changed this to an administrative citation of $100. And the enforcement of those citations was assigned to other employees in the city of Monterey that have citation authority, in particular the code compliance officers, but also other folks in the city of Monterey that have citation authority could theoretically also cite for face covering violations. And the first administrative citation fee is $100, the second offense $150 and the third for $200. So that was enacted on June 30th at 4:30 PM. We were in an active enforcement mode throughout the weekend and it was highly successful. And with that, I am concluding my presentation and I recommend that you adopt an urgency ordinance to make this an enforceable action with an administrative citation and adopt a resolution to ratify my decision from June 30th.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah, just a question. Do we have any statistics since we engaged the code enforcement on their patrols?
Yeah, I have more on my COVID-19 update, but we issued a total so far on Saturday and Sunday of three citations completely. The message that the city has a new citation apparently bear a lot of fruit because a lot of, we found almost complete compliance. There were folks that were not wearing the mask because they just came out of a restaurant. We reminded them of that. And the code compliance officer, two, were working throughout the whole weekend. One actually had three shifts of 10 hours each and the other one had two shifts of eight hours each. The two code compliance officers reported actually back that they got a lot of compliments from the public, that finally someone was out there enforcing it. And we had very rare cases. We had folks that were reminded by the code compliance officers of wearing face masks. And unfortunately, those folks are probably in the camp that face masks don't help anyone and they just walked away. And of course, code compliance is disengaging in those cases. We had very rare cases where people ignored us. Parallel, I can report that on the same days when we had the code compliance officers out, we also had community services officers out in Canary Row as well as WAF Number One. And they were also equipped with face masks that they were tasked to hand out to people who didn't have face masks and also just to check them up and encourage face coverings. And we gave out a total of less than 30 face masks over two days because frankly, everyone was wearing face masks or had a face mask available. So I feel this is a very successful example. And those of you who follow the news saw that yesterday, the city of Salinas basically implemented the same measures now for the city of Salinas. So other cities are following suit.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
All right, Nat, did we have any public comment?
It doesn't look like we do. And just a reminder to the public, folks can call into 831-225-0330. And conference ID is 1927648Pound. We've had the lower third captain on there for some time and looks like no one's called in.
Okay, good. Then I think we'll entertain a motion to approve the emergency ordinance.
Move to.
And discussion? Anyone else?
Yeah, under discussion, I guess my only question is, we had a conversation earlier, I think, with the home occupancy about the fines and whether or not as they ramp up, they should be more. And as I've thought about it, I wonder the same here. Like, is 100, 150 and 300? Like if somebody, if it's a third offense, that's pretty intransigent disobedience and disregard for the law and for public safety. I'm just wondering how other council members feel about the possibility of making the ramp up a little bit different? Like maybe 100, 200, 500, 100, 250, 500, 100, 500,000? I don't know. And I don't know what our legal limitations are in terms of making sure that this is still a civil fine. But I would be open to the possibility of making the second and third offense higher depending how other people feel and what our legal capabilities are. So I just wanted to see what other folks thought.
Alan, good point. I guess if I had some data in front of me that told me we already see a sign of secondary contact, third contact where we have the data to support it, I would sort of be open to go back and change this commensurate with the activity if it becomes a problem. I'm going to guess that the first ticket of 100 is going to sting pretty good. And if somebody is dumb enough to get a second ticket for the same thing, I would guess it's probably going to be rare that we catch the person in that same spot in the same district at the same moment that code enforcement's there. But I think if there's the need, I would certainly support that to raise that amount. I'm just not sure that we have the need yet.
Okay, so you'd be more comfortable approving this and monitoring?
Yes, absolutely. And if within two weeks we see a problem and this, you know, goes on, you know, beyond, God forbid, months and months. Okay, I'm hopeful, I'm positive. I want this thing to come under control. But I think if this gives us evidence from our field units that tell us that they need more teeth, I'd be willing to bring it back and do that.
I can mention something here. I think, Alan, the higher amounts only work if it's deterrent and people are aware that after the third, $500 to $600. And maybe that word would get out if somebody actually got a third offense. So I think that, I think I'm going to have to agree with Ed that if it's a problem, then can we come back and actually change it again? Is that what we're looking at? If it becomes a problem?
Maybe that's a question for staff, like what are our limits? And I assume we, obviously we could change this, but just maybe staff could speak to that.
Yeah, you can come back, council, and change it. And we have done that for certain citations. So you remember short-term rental? We had somebody who was making more money that we could actually fine them and we adjusted the fines for those cases as well. So there are options for you to come back. Right now, we have tasked the code compliance officers also to ensure that we go back to the same site if it was a business to ensure that they got the first message. So we will see whether the first message was received or not.
I have a question about businesses and maybe it was already spoken about. What if a business is not enforcing face covering? What's the fines for businesses?
It's $100, $150, $200.
The same?
Yes.
For one business?
Yes.
Multiple people in the building? Okay. Maybe that should be the amount.
I mean, I would disagree generally with Alan's statement. I think if there's interest in wanting to do it later on, why wait? Why bring it back? Why don't we just do it now? And get it done and make it more of a deterrent? You can start communicating that message more clearly now as opposed to folks getting comfortable with the process and how it's set up now.
Look, if I may put this into perspective, we had about 330 contacts over Friday, Saturday and Sunday that brought out three citations. So I understand the willingness of the council to make it more deterrent, but that's compliance already achieved. So I just want to throw this out that it was not six contacts and three citations. We had 330 contacts. six contacts and three citations. We had three hundred thirty contacts in various forms and three citations out of that. So that's a point one percent. So it's maybe advisable just to hang in there and see what we bring as data back.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to go. I'm going to lose the power here in a minute, so I'm going to move this along. And if you lose me, I'll be right back. And so the motion to clarify, I forgot to mention the motion would be an ordinance and a resolution?
Yes, adopt an urgency ordinance, adopt the California Department of Public Health's guidance for the use of face coverings to be enforceable by administrative citation within the City of Monterey, and adopt the resolution to ratify the Director of Emergency Services order regarding the same.
And that's what I said. Thank you, Hans. Roll call, please. And take me first and I'll run up and get my charger.
Mr. Mayor, are you making a motion to approve? Because if you are, I'll second it.
Yeah, I think we had one before, but let's redo it. I'll make that motion to approve and Alan seconds it. And I vote yes and I'll be right back.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Haffan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Robeson was a yes.
Okay.
Alan, do you want to maybe get us going on the next one? Just to introduce Hans, maybe?
Just getting my agenda pulled up there. So the next item, item eighteen, is City Manager Report on COVID nineteen Response Efforts. Your manager?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor Haffan. I will go and share my screen with you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, I have four main talking points I want to provide to talk today about our COVID nineteen update. I will talk about the Monterey County data, our city COVID nineteen highlights, our local economic stimulus plan, as well as give you an update where we are with our emergency housing assistance. This is the data from today. The cases in the county are still climbing. You have the various numbers here. Today, we learned that the Community Hospital of the Monterey Peninsula has nine positive COVID nineteen patients inside the hospital, the highest number they ever had since the outbreak. And the Community Hospital of Monterey is basically indicating that they are afraid that those numbers in Chomp on the Monterey Peninsula might go slowly up, continuing to go up. Again, today, the highest number ever recorded at Chomp with nine positive patients in the hospital. This is where we are, the monitoring metrics. On Friday, we had those two indicators in red. On Sunday, this indicator here, the seven-day average turned red. And I think yesterday, the overall test positivity rate for the past seven days went up to ten point five percent. And this is the reason why the governor on Friday put the county on the watch list and on Monday, yesterday, put the county on new restrictions. There have been some data points that were provided by the county with respect of awaiting a state order to tell them what to do. To the best of my knowledge, that state order has not arrived yet. Having said that, it's pretty clear from my reading of the state mandates and the state orders and what the state has done through their Public Health Department that the city will, that the state has ordered effectively by putting new restriction on us the following: We have to close the indoor and outdoor operations for bars, breweries, pubs, and brew pubs. The dine-in restaurants have to close all indoor seating. Wineries and tasting rooms have to close the inside services. Movie theaters to close, also family entertainment centers, but I took this out because I don't think we have too many of those here. Drive-in movies are still allowed with applicable guidelines and indoor museums to close. And again, this is all information easily available on the website of the state. And today, the county was agreeing with that as well. And here's basically a graphic that we sent out tonight to all our residents in the City of Monterey with our daily email blast and social media blast that basically informed everyone of what's going, what is going on. So this will be all in effect tomorrow on probably midnight tonight, if one second past midnight. All restaurants have to switch from indoor dining to outdoor dining. If they don't have the capability to do that, then of course, the restaurants will shut down again. This is the County State Health Order, and that is totally reflective of what we knew already Monday morning. Here's what we did in the City of Monterey. We issued three different emergency orders since the last time we spoke and I updated you. Number one was on June twenty-sixth, in response to a request we received from the old Monterey Business Association. We allowed a temporary encroachment permit to administratively to allow outdoor seating and outdoor retail. That basically is in response to requests from business districts to allow restaurants as well as retailers to spill over onto our sidewalks. We have a pretty strong prohibition on that and a pretty administrative process. Usually, in the COVID nineteen scenario, this emergency order allows us administratively to give our temporary encroachment permits. This all will work when restaurants want to have additional seating on the sidewalks. Of course, we have to be ensuring that we are compliant with ADA clearance and as well as A B C will have a hazard word to say as well. If there will be alcohol served in the open on our sidewalks, there is also a small process that the restaurants have to follow should they want to serve alcohol on the sidewalk. Our temporary encroachment permit waives all the fees. The A B C fee, I believe, is three hundred fifty dollars. As we just ratified together with you, we issued a face covering administrative citation and we also closed, issued a beach closure for July third to the fifth, which was actually peninsula-wide. We started the trend, shall we say, and then everybody thought it was a great idea. And then, of course, like those things sometimes happen, everyone decided, let's do it a day earlier. So July third to the fifth, we ordered also a beach closure during the Fourth of July weekend, which I believe was a complete success. The beaches were empty and, as I shared with you earlier, also the face covering mandate was almost completely followed by visitors here in the City of Monterey. Council pointed out last meeting that transparency, public information is important. And so I make a special mentioning of that, that with today's email, we have sent out sixty-eight daily updates since the start of the COVID nineteen crisis. Every single day, weekday, and even sometimes on Saturdays, our community public outreach person, Laurie Huelga, as well as Eric Palmer, who also works in public outreach, is submitting, distributing to our residents information. And sixty-eight daily updates were sent through email and social media. And today, we informed everyone about the July eighth measures that are now putting the dimmer switch on on our operation in the city a little bit. We also updated our website. You will find there now on www-monterey.org/coronavirus, a dashboard that will give you easy information access points, among them, what is open in the city. And we also switched last week from daily media calls to twice a week. And frankly, our journalists were very receptive of that as well. And so Mondays and Thursdays, we are still meeting at eleven o'clock with all our local journalists through our virtual meeting space and update them about city initiatives as well as other things that we feel are worthwhile to share with our residents. Senior programming, we started the senior produce distribution again on six twenty-nine. That was a highly successful program that was located at the Schultz Center on Lighthouse and Dickman. We restarted it on six twenty-nine. It's a partnership with the food bank. Sign up is required. We had a hundred twenty-one folks signing up. Unfortunately, we could only serve eighty-eight on six twenty-nine because the food bank ran out of produce. Having said that, we will start doing this on a weekly basis on seven thirteen twenty, so on the thirteenth of July. And then every seven days, we will have that produce distribution again. The location for that is at the youth center, at the Alastero Center. And because it will be a drive-by and people will be remaining in the cars while the food bank then distributes produce to seniors. So one program is back, so to speak, that caters directly to our seniors. The sports center is open Monday from Monday and Thursday from six A M. to one P M., as well as from four P M. to seven P M., as well as Fridays from six to one and Saturdays from eight to one. We are still closed on Sunday. We have the weight room open, the cardio areas are open. And we started last week, Monday, I believe, again, to have group exercise classes offered. I tell you that the group exercise classes offered by Laurie Tate are very much booked out. We are exercising, or they are exercising on the sun deck next to the swimming pool outdoors. And the signup is very good for those classes. We still require a twenty-four-hour reservation and we also require to wear masks indoors. Health checks screening is being provided. I tell you that the numbers of folks that are signing up for the various weight room and cardio areas are really not that great. They are really very small numbers. And we have space for about nine hundred folks if we book every every time slot in the right way. And I think we have about two hundred fifty to maybe three hundred folks during the opening times in the sports center. So that's something that gives us pause and then we, of course, we'll keep an eye out on those numbers and will adjust. We have not made a decision yet whether we want to open the pool or not intentionally. We want to see what the next couple of days are bringing us and what the county health officer might recommend. I don't think Dr. Moreno has yet spoken his last words yet. So the pool, for the time being, remains closed. We have an operational plan for the pool, but I tell you that also that probably we have three lifeguards on duty and we have probably triple or quadruple the amount of maximum customers in the water. So again, we need to see what is the right ratios there. Library is now sixteen days of sidewalk service. Over six thousand items have been checked out by over two thousand customers. Interestingly enough, here are some data points. Forty-two percent of the users of the sidewalk service, or forty-three percent, are actually Monterey residents. The others are non-taxpayers for the City of Monterey and come from Pacific Grove, Monterey County, and others, including the City of Carmel. So that gives us a little bit of pause, of course, to see that the services are received by our residents, but also to a greater deal by non-residents. And of course, that's something we have to follow closely. Veterans Campground is open for business. We are selling out on the weekends. It's pretty well attended during the week. The revenues there are looking good. The T O T remittance, we switch from bimonthly remittance to monthly. What this will do, what this will help us with is that we will get the T O T data earlier, up to forty days, forty-five days earlier. And we, the hotel operators have received or are receiving our letters, which we sent out yesterday. We also gave them a heads-up last week through a telephone conference call. And now the T O T is due fifteen days after the end of the previous month. And so with that, we wanted to have a tool in our hand to really make data-driven decisions and to find out how is T O T developing again. That will help us with reopening, the rehiring of our team members. Parking revenues in June were at three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And in the first five days of July, we made about eighty thousand dollars. That excludes the number, a certain number, or that excludes all the citation numbers. So these are just revenues that were derived in the parking lots and the parking garages. What also gives us a shot in the arm is the parking fee increases that became effective July first. And the parking revenue is very strong and we are very pleased with that right now. As you know, the parking fund has spent some money over the past couple of years, so we need some infusions there. City COVID highlights, another one is five hundred million dollars from the CARES Act were allocated to the state and the state decided to give, I apologize. The state got actually, I believe, four billion dollars from the CARES Act and the state allocated five hundred million dollars from that initial allocation to small cities. And that translates for our city to three hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars. So this is the only help we have received so far from the state or from the federal government, three hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars. And it is, comes with some strings. It can only be spent on COVID nineteen-related expenses. And so our team has started to look at how are we going to maximize our cost recovery? And as you know, there's also the FEMA reimbursements, which will reimburse you for eligible expenses up to seventy-five percent. And the state funding of three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars doesn't have that. That's a hundred percent reimbursement. So we are working right now the numbers to really maximize the funds for the City of Monterey. Of course, some of our partners in the business districts have expressed interest that we share some of that three hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars with them. And my initial response to our groups when they ask for some cost sharing there or some revenue sharing of those funds is that that's our money. That's the city's money that helps us manage our own losses of revenues. We didn't have a P P E. We didn't have a lot of other things that other industries had. So my response was basically, that's ours and no, you don't get anything of that.
Hans, I have a quick question on that one?
Yes. Yes.
I heard through community member that the county today discussed receiving an allocation of funding. And I'm assuming it's from the state, same purposes. Do you know if that's true or not?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, and I'm assuming that those same restrictions that we have regards to our allocation also apply to the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is the local economic stimulus plan. So far, we have distributed over three hundred thirty-five to small businesses. A total of forty-nine different businesses have received grant amounts, either five thousand or ten thousand dollars. The next installment will be going out by the end of this week and will affect or will reach out to about fifteen businesses in the tidelands. And that will be about two hundred thousand dollars. So if you do the math quickly, you see the three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars is of the five hundred thousand dollar allocation to the, from the parking fund. So there's another one sixty-five that is in the pipeline to be allocated. And then the tidelands fund is funded at five hundred. And I think the correct number is one ninety-seven, one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars that are going to businesses in the tidelands by the end of the week. You all know, but it's worthwhile repeating. This is a great partnership between the Community Foundation, which basically has six folks inside their organization to review the grants and to recommend approval. The Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce, which basically created a data or a portal to take the applications in. And then, of course, they do the sunshine part by distributing the checks. And the city of Monterey, we are just in the background. We give the money, we do the final review and approval with the mayor, vice mayor and myself. Then we cut the checks and again, then we hand the checks over to the Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. And it has been a great partnership. And the chamber president, Frank Geisler, who distributes those checks going from business to business, has shared a lot of stories of folks that were telling them that those checks are really, will be helping them to survive. And I know council has received also a few letters that were written by grateful businesses and expressed their gratitude. So that the program is fully running. And we hope that over the next couple of weeks, we will spend all the money and hopefully we'll keep some businesses alive. I was asked to talk about the Emergency Housing Assistance Program. The CARES Act provided C D B G funding in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. And then we used our own program income that are generated by our housing projects and housing programs that we have that added another six hundred forty-nine thousand dollars. And so we are awaiting the final approval from HUD for that program. But we are already starting to spend some of that money to start that program. So that's what it means when it says we are incurring costs prior to approval from HUD. How are we doing that? United Way helps us with integrating our emergency assistance program with the regional two-one-one program. We're using City Data Services to get the online application out there and filled out. And then we have tailored the program also that United Way and City Data Services can be used by any other cities to create basically a regional program. City staff then will review the applications and issue the checks. We have a soft launch right now in July. And what I mean by soft launch is that we have already received over the past two, three months, expressed interest by five to ten renters who told us they need emergency housing assistance. And so we are starting to test the program right now. The launch with two-one-one will actually start in early August. And at that time, we anticipate that HUD will have signed off on that program. And then the funding is available throughout the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Another element of the Emergency Housing Assistance Program that we are trying to figure out right now is how are we allowing folks that are renting rooms from somebody who has the lease with the landlord? How can we empower those folks also who are renting rooms to become eligible for the emergency housing assistance? There are several ways of doing that. One of them is if there is a subletting in place where basically the landlord, the tenant, and then the renter of the room, renter, all have paperwork. It's a pretty straightforward process. The difficulty we will have to maneuver and figure out how to do it is for all those cases where you have folks renting a room without the knowledge of the landlord. And so we will be meeting tomorrow with someone who might be able to shed some light on that and help us to structure that program. But again, it will start officially in August. And right now, we are just softly launching the program with the folks that we know are already on the list and interested in this program. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, Hans. That was an excellent presentation and compliments to the city and the community at large for all the programs that are going on. It's definitely an outreach. Council questions? Any public comment?
We do have public comments and would you like to take that now?
Yeah, let's do that, then we'll get back to any council comments.
Okay. Okay, super. Our caller is Esther Malkin. Esther, you're live with our city council.
Good evening. Esther, again, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I can see you're moving your lips, but I can't even hear you sometimes on net. So a couple of things I wanted to, first of all, thank staff for addressing pretty much all the concerns that I brought up to them about particular cases and situations having to do with the Real Estate Assistance Program. We spent a lot of time on trying to think ahead and get as many people covered in various situations. I'm not sure if, I got a communication from Grant saying that the room renter situation has been confirmed that they can be done through HUD and that additionally, the people who don't have a direct lease or sublease with the landlord, they were okay with taking a letter from the landlord, giving approval for the room to be rented. And that would be enough, even though there might not be paperwork between the person renting it and the person holding the lease as a renter. I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but I did get that from Grant in an email and I forwarded to you guys. So ultimately, that would cover pretty much every situation that I can think of. Because, you know, landlords do all require some knowledge of who's going to be on their property. Even if they've okayed the rental of a room between the person they are in a contract with, they are, if the other two parties have a contract or an arrangement, as long as the landlord is aware of it, the understanding that I got from the email from Grant is that as long as the landlord writes in a letter about that, it does qualify for the HUD funding. I do question the dates that you were showing that this is only going to be in effect till next year. I'm guessing that maybe it's going to be only in effect with the COVID fund. But I specifically asked at the beginning of this that this program remain in place regardless of where we are after COVID because we've been in need of a program like this for many years before. So again, other than that, you know, it's been really great to see staff react to a lot of the suggestions and come up with solutions. And hopefully, you know, we can be ready to go because I think we need to have the funds in place for all this work because that's kind of next renter here.
Thank you, Esther.
If we have money now, yeah, let me just finish real quick. If we have money now that's available, that needs to be in the fund. And then whatever money comes in later, can tell people later on.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. And that concludes public comment for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Nat. So any council comments, questions about the city manager's outstanding report?
I just have a few questions, Mayor.
Yes, please, council member Tyler.
So I wonder if both for the Rental Assistance Program and for the, the, the emergency funds for businesses, the local economic stimulus plan, if we can share information online about the process for selecting applicants so that it's clear to the public how those funds are being used?
Hans?
I thought Tyler had more questions.
Okay.
Yes, the grant application process can be explained. It was explained through a January report, but we can put this on the website as well. And we have also posted the award post on the website as well. And absolutely, we can be bringing that all forward and also how the emergency rental assistance is working. That, of course, has to be widely advertised on all types of media channels, including maybe even paid advertisement in the Weekly or the Herald or other publications to ensure that most of the, that all the renters know what they can do. So yes, thank you for that proposal. We will do that.
Okay, yeah, I just been approached by some folks in the community that were concerned, you know, and I think that they're coming to assumptions in their head because they don't know how the selection process works for the allocation of the funds to the businesses. There was concern about, what about small businesses? And I think we're on the up and up. But I think if we can publicize that information so that way the public has a right to see funding that isn't part of a normal process. I think that would be helpful. And the comment you made about advertising does kind of lead into one of my other questions. I think it would be helpful to see the advertising. And then attached to that, you and I have talked about this element of receiving private dollar donations for the rental assistance program. And so I'm wondering if there's any updates on that and if that can be included in the advertisement so we can get support outside of funding from C D B G?
Yes, absolutely. We had a staff discussion about that, I think it was today. I mean, the days are hard to differentiate now. And we will make that part of that private donations can come into the city and they are fully tax deductible. And that will be part also of saying, hey, guys, you can also run a GoFundMe campaign here and put money into the city's emergency assistance program as well.
Okay, and then my last question on this is, I may have missed it, but in your presentation, I didn't see anything about the Salvation Army. And I know that was, there was discussion about that. Did I miss something?
No, you didn't miss anything. I didn't speak about the Salvation Army.
Oh, is that?
Kim Cole is still online. Kim, can you explain what we are doing with the Salvation Army?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Our negotiations with the Salvation Army were not fruitful. They will continue to receive our normal social service grant, but they won't be helping us with the emergency housing program.
Okay.
Sorry.
What is it, what happened? Is it, were they just asking for too much funding or?
Yes, for the services, they were, it was approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that would have reduced, you know, the amount of emergency assistance available by that amount. So we decided to absorb that in-house and work on the program that way.
Okay.
Got any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, please, yeah.
Go ahead, Alan. You're next.
I was just going to share some input on the business grants. The mayor and myself and the city manager served as a subcommittee on that. The Chamber of Commerce and the foundation had folks who basically vetted the grant requests for us and made recommendations. I would say a few of the principles we had, we didn't want to overturn their recommendations in principle. We wanted to respect the work that they did. We didn't get into things like, does this business really need it? Or are they going to be viable? We just decided we would trust the work of that committee. We did primarily look at three things. Number one, was the business a Monterey business? So there were one or two grant requests that our subcommittee denied because, based on the staff research, they actually weren't located in Monterey. Were they a tidelands business? Because obviously, tidelands money can only go to tidelands businesses. So there may have been one or two that that became an issue and those grants were not denied or were not approved because they weren't in the tidelands. And there may have been one business. Let's just say we didn't want to support businesses that are actively suing the city of Monterey. Other than that, our, the general consensus of our committee was we didn't want to get into overturning things or trying to, you know, trying to overthink it. We wanted to trust the recommendations of the chamber and the foundation volunteers who helped us. So that was our criteria. I think Tyler, you talked about big businesses, small businesses. My recollection is that a business, and Hans helped me out. I think you had to have not more than ten employees and at least two employees or something like that. So.
Yes.
They're small businesses.
I believe two to twenty employees, nice.
Yeah, and that's the exact kind of stuff. I appreciate that update, Alan. That's the, that kind of stuff I think would be helpful. Website, right where we post who the recipients of the funding is. So that way we can just, I can just say, when people come to me, hey, go to the website. It's there. It's publicly available.
Yeah, and I don't think they're, I mean, I would support that as well. I think it would be helpful for people just to see the general criteria. Business in Monterey, business in the tidelands, number of employees, COVID impacted, because that was also a consideration. There are some businesses that really honestly were not COVID impacted. So, yeah.
Mayor, I just have a couple of quick questions on the parking revenue.
Yes, please.
The city manager, that's almost three hundred and fifty thousand in the month of June. And it looks like we're on track of about five hundred thousand in July. How does that compare to last year's parking revenue? Is it still pretty much down? It's not?
I was afraid you would ask me that, council member Albert, because when I gave you the numbers, I thought, well, a smart council member will ask me how are we comparing to last year? And I don't know. So, but you're absolutely correct. I should have known that number.
Oh, not at all.
I know.
It's lower.
I can share with you, though, that in the waterfront parking lot, we twice approached almost our record days from previous years. So it looks, it looks pretty good. We have the parking garages still not charging. They will be starting to charge very soon. Canary Row parking garage also was in June not online until the very end of June. So there will be more money coming in, but I cannot really give you a month-to-month comparison from this year to last year. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, the only reason I bring that up is that if we are receiving revenues and that must mean that we are hiring or bringing back parking employees, which is good to hear.
Yes, most of our employees that we brought back are in parking right now. And I will give you on Friday another update of what we brought back. I believe this week we, or starting on the 15th, I think we bring back two more part timers helping us in the library, for instance.
So then the last question on that is that if we are receiving more, are we receiving more revenue than we have in our budget? So that'll show some type of update somewhere along the line in a couple of months?
Yes. And again, this is parking fund and parking fund revenues, not a real connection yet to the general fund.
Exactly. That's it. Thank you.
And we owe you an answer with respect to the parking rates increases or the parking rate, the local plans. Councilmember Hafa wanted to know what we, how many parking spaces we have in the Tidlens and that will be provided July 21st.
Very good. Councilmember Ed, did you want to weigh in, please?
Yes, I wanted to thank you and Alan for participating and overseeing the local business stimulus program. And, you know, the input that you gave was very helpful. I want to report back from two businesses that were recipients. Both were about $10,000 and I don't need to name them, but they were both extremely appreciative. And both, that amount of money meant, in one case, being able to retain an employee. And the other one, huge lowering of stress and the ability to see the next couple of months to be able to know that they could still be in business in Monterey. So that, that amount of money, although $10,000 with the numbers we talk about in our budget doesn't seem like much, but for a small business that's struggling to make rent and keep an employee, that is a tremendous help up. So thanks for your work on that. And they very much appreciated that amount to be able to survive.
Well, that's good to hear. All right, we've got about just a few more minutes. Do we have some burning council comments?
Not for me, Mayor.
Okay.
Few council comments and I apologize, but I do.
No, that's fine.
So at the end of June, the Ford Ord Reuse Authority sunset after 26 years of trying to guide the redevelopment of the former Ford Ord. As your representative, I just wanted to let you know, number one, we closed the books with no known legal liabilities that could come back and impact the city of Monterey or any of the other cities. That was very important. We closed out the books with no legal liabilities. We also established a bond that creates at least 26 million. It could be more than that when all is said and done, but at least 26 million for blight removal. Blight removal is so important because if you take those blighted buildings down, it makes it much more cost effective for redevelopment of the former Ford Ord. Redevelopment leads to more economic activity. It's, it's a good thing. It's a win-win for the whole region. So that, I, that was, I can't even tell you how many obstacles we had to overcome to pass that bond. I'll just say it was, it was something, especially given the very tight timeline we had with our sunset. And I'm very proud that we did that. In terms of habitat, habitat protection is largely going to be jurisdiction by jurisdiction responsibility. For us, it's not going to be a particularly, I don't think, expensive burden. There was talk and we spent many, 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 many meetings looking at, do we want to create a regional joint powers association for that? In the end, there are just, the interests are so different. Some of us have federal species that are of concern. Some of us have state species. They're not all the same. Some of us want to develop our land. Some of us, like Marina, already have all of their development, you know, their development permits granted. So there were just, it made it difficult because we had different interests. So that didn't happen. It could happen in the future, but we just didn't have enough time to make, to make a habitat GPA happen. But I do believe our staff understand what the requirements for our small little 120-some acres are. I don't think it's going to be that much of a burden. All of the land that needed to be transferred, including the city of Monterey's acres, were transferred. That's huge. That's big time huge. So, you know, we got all of that done with the army and the federal government. All of the lands that had yet to transfer, transferred, including ours. And then the last thing I would say is that basically future development is now the responsibility of local jurisdictions. And so like the limits that we had as far as what we could do, do we want it to be commercial and industrial, light industrial? That we're not necessarily limited by that. On the other hand, things like affordable housing requirements and things like that, it's really going to be up to the local jurisdictions and the voters in these jurisdictions to make sure that the original vision is sustained. So that's my report on FORA. As you know, I also represent you on Community Human Services. We've been working with the Gathering for Women to develop the county site at at Noche Buena as a peninsula homeless center, the Casa de Noche Buena for women, homeless women and families. We are planning to open in November. We've begun construction. I'm hoping the city manager will be coming back to us at some point with a request for some funding for that. I don't know where the heck that money is going to come from, but it's really essential that we, we help support this peninsula homeless center. I represent you on the Monterey Bay Community Power. A couple of things that have happened. We recently changed our name to Central Coast Community Energy. That's to reflect the fact that we are now the largest regional community energy entity in the state. In terms of geography, we include Monterey County, Santa Cruz County, San Benito County, and we've expanded into San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara County. I had, I will be honest, I had concerns that we were getting too big, that that would create challenges. But there are benefits as far as like cost, just the costs of being a large entity and spreading the costs out. So we did do that. I did support that. The other big thing we did is there is a nuclear power facility down in San Luis Obispo. When our agency was selling our agency to folks down there, they said we were not invested in that nuclear power facility. We weren't at the time. But basically, a deal that PG&E made was trying to force us to accept energy credits from that nuclear power agency. To not accept those would cost money. It was, again, a difficult decision. I did not want to have to do that, but because we had made a commitment that we would not use those energy credits, ultimately supported the agency's direction not to participate in the nuclear energy credits. And then the last point I wanted to bring up has to do with cannabis. And we're in a situation where we're trying to, we're obviously made very much aware of the fact how dependent we are on hospitality, which is great, but it's not good to be overly dependent on one industry. Meanwhile, the city of Seaside, the city of Delray Oaks, and recently, the city of Marina, as well as the county of Monterey and as near to us as Carmel Valley and the barnyard have all got different types of cannabis operations. So we approved a cannabis testing facility at Ryan Ranch. I haven't heard back from the city manager. I talked to him yesterday about this, but I know there were issues with that. They had concerns about future regulations. And I just think this is something we need to look at again. I, I, I just, I understand how people feel, but we are losing out on jobs. We're losing out on city revenue. And I think this is something I would ask us to revisit in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Alan, what are you going to do with the 40 hours a week extra time that you have now that you don't go to FORA anymore?
Oh, my gosh, it is, I got to be honest, that's the best thing. We've been having so many meetings, Mr. Mayor. I mean, so many meetings beyond the normal. Like, we've been meeting, I would say, three meetings a month, sometimes more, so.
Well, we appreciate your service on that. And I know, Councilmember Dan, I think you were part of FORA when you were with the school district. So we thank you for that, too. Other council comments? We've got about four minutes.
The only thing that I would add is, and I spoke about this during council comments, I think at the last council meeting, was that Monterey One Water was looking at increasing the rates due to everything that's going on. But on top of that, there was already a need to increase rates because it's been years since they've done it and they've delayed it for, I think, what was too long. So there, we will be pushing forward to look at doing a rate increase of $3.50 a month. So that was a way of negotiating to not go too crazy, but there's still a need to go a lot higher than that. I think when staff originally proposed it to us, it was to increase it something closer to $30, which is significant. And they were, so we were going to pace it out over several years. So we didn't put it on everybody too fast. But then the shelter in place happened and so we decided to, we actually decided to nix it all together at first. And then we realized, well, actually, we're going to have to lay people off and do furloughs, which is something that we really should not be doing with Monterey One Water and these extremely expensive assets that we have and the work that they do to maintain them. So that's why we're moving forward with that and we'll be seeing that come down in the pipeline here soon.
Very good. Pun intended. Down the pipeline. Councilmember Ed.
Yes, with limited time, I'll just rattle them off quick. I know the county watches our meetings. So for those that are listening in the county, I really want to see Monterey residents having available testing for COVID-19. So anything the county can do to be able to allow the peninsula residents to get the COVID-19 tests without having to wait in a car for three hours, please get us some availability so we can make appointments. Number two, I want to ask for the mayor and the council if we could close our meeting in a few minutes on behalf of Joe Gunter, the mayor from Salinas, all of our friends, leader from Salinas, former police officer for 33 years in Salinas. Just in honor of our friend, former mayor, who we lost on the 29th of June to a sudden illness. So if we can close the meeting in the honor of Joe, I appreciate that. Also, I want to just give you a little thing that has to do with how we're all trying to recover and sustain during COVID-19 with so many financial hits and difficulties our families have, our businesses have. And just, we know that things will get better as we seek a normalcy and as we look for ways to heal. There are opportunities there. So I want to encourage people. And there's this saying that I've always loved for years is, it's Earl Nightingale said, "We become what we think about." So I want to encourage people to take the time to spend time for strategic thinking, reading, helping each other. We know naturally, we go into panic mode when things change, but concentrate on the future that will be better based on strategic decisions and thinking. With those that do that with their family and friends, we will get better together as a community. And fourth, I want to follow up on the financial piece. We talked tonight about the sacrifices. We talked about TOT increase. We've just gone through the budget process. I think I've mentioned this a couple of times. I want to bring back as an agendized item to officially take a position for city that we say it's time for us to, all of us, give up our stipend on the city council and the boards and commissions. I know in some of those stipends, they're very small, but I think it's meaningful for all of us to realize. We've asked our city employees to sacrifice. I think it's time that we bring that as an agenda item and make that official and take a position as a city council and suspends stipends that boards and commissions and the city council receive. So with that, I'll send that to the city manager and the mayor and ask for that to be agendized in the future. And, and thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ed. I wanted to give a greeting to Colonel Greg Ford, who is leaving our area. We appreciate him very much and all the work that he did at the Defense Language Institute. I got to know him fairly well and he was absolutely first-class professional and had a great love of Monterey. And he told me in an email today that he and his wife Rebecca will be visiting us often. So we wish him all the very best. And then, yes, we will adjourn in memory of Joe Gunter. Joe spent over 50 years in public service. I enjoyed meeting with him at mayor's association meetings and a very dry sense of humor. Always had a twinkle in his eye. He was the first one to tease us and we always teased him back. But he was also someone who was on many, many county boards, always willing to help. It ranged from anything from the airport to homeless outreach. He was absolutely just a first-class person. So we will definitely adjourn in his honor. And city manager, anything else? Or you, no?
No, Mr. Mayor, no.
Well, you did a yeoman's job this evening. A very considerate person. We appreciate that. That's enough Cs for the night, right? So we will adjourn in the memory of our good friend, Mayor Joe Gunter. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, all.